Can you guys hear me? So I have this pop-up that says that Cisco Webex Meetings has stopped working, and they need to close the program.
Same.
I think that's from the last meeting, probably. It's still open.
Yep, same.
But the computer was off.
Same. Yeah, I have the same problem.
I had it too. I just closed it.
Me too.
Me too.
Hello, everyone. I usually don't have my stuff clicked on this good. I'm early. I've got 30 seconds on my clock. Unless somebody's itching to go.
We will sell no one before it's time.
Oh. Fifteen. All right, five o'clock. Sorry, that was really loud. Okay, may I have a motion to approve and accept this agenda with the amendment of two items? Communication from the public, return to learn, the addition of Sue Terrasi and Christine Thompson, and six A consent agenda personnel report.
Motion.
Second.
Any questions on that? Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
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 Opposed? None? All right, thanks, guys. We're gonna do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation.
One nation. And visible.
Thanks, everyone. Okay, communication from the public. I've got a couple things here on that. I'm going to read our standard. And then we do have a lot of communication from the public tonight, so we're just gonna go through that. This will come up before the, all of the people on the agenda. I'm just gonna read it once, so everybody has it, so I don't have to repeat it 15 times. On behalf of the board, we'd like to invite, we'll add you to it later, to step to the microphone with comments about items of interest or concern. Please begin by stating your name and address. Thank you for limiting your comments to three minutes, so we can keep the meeting moving in a timely fashion. We ask that you remember Iowa law prohibits us from discussing specific performance or individual students. Thank you for your support of our school district. And then, since we are via WebEx, for those people who would like to join the public comment portion of the board meeting, but are not on the agenda, what I need you to do is share your name and address in the comment box of our WebEx. Our moderator will unmute you when it is time for you to speak. For those who requested to speak before the agenda was posted, your comments will be made via the video address for all other public comments. Your mic will be unmuted when it's time for you to speak. Thanks for your participation. And board policy does limit this public comment time to three minutes. This is, we've got a lot of people who want to talk, and just out of respect for everybody's time, that's going to be three minutes. Our moderator is going to have a timer. At the end of your three minutes, your mic will be put on mute. Not because we don't want to hear anybody, but we have to respect everybody's time. So be prepared for three minutes. If board members, of course, trying to ask questions during the middle of all of this is very difficult. And we also have a discussion item later where we can address any questions, either from people who are part of the comment, public communication, or so if you want to keep track of questions, we will have our staff keep track of any particular questions that people from the public ask. And then we can address those during our return to learn discussion before we vote. And also just trying to reduce the mic feedback from people. I don't have anyone in the room right now, live, who wants to speak. Everyone is on WebEx. But just so everybody knows, that's how we're gonna try to keep the meeting moving tonight. My first person on the agenda, communication from the public, is Sarah Bartol. Like before, when you are unmuted, if you would just state your name and address again for the record, and then you will have your three minutes. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, my name is Sarah Bartol, 8141 Northwest 27th Court, Ankeny, Iowa. I want to thank you all for the work that's been done in the return to learn plan. To end today, tonight, I bring before you more than 1,800 signatures from a petition that I, as one of the Ankeny Guardians, along with other community members, put together to ask for you all to vote no to the hybrid plan. We're asking you to give families a full-time in-person option in addition to the 100% online that is already being offered, for families to select what is best for their children and situation. You are going to hear from several people tonight, but our petition is inclusive of more than 1,800 people's voices that are in favor of full-time in-person school options when school resumes. Here are a couple comments I wanted to pull out from those that signed. From Lindsay, quote, "I'm concerned the hybrid proposal disproportionately impacts dual-income households, single parents, and especially lower-income families. Where will many families come up with the resources to adjust to an A/B day school schedule?" From Rebecca, "I believe our children's education is essential, and so the best option is sending them back to school. I am a single parent and a nurse. Families have never been surveyed to ask them what learning method they want. You've had plenty of opportunities to do so, but have not taken advantage of those. This petition represents a sampling of those wanting a full-time in-person option. There is no data to support the hybrid recommendation. Also to note, I've heard feedback that it's only six weeks, but I've yet to see what criteria and data we would need that the schools can go to full-time instruction. From a teacher's perspective that I talked to, the first six weeks are the most important weeks of the year to build routine, rapport with students, and community. Those that go 100% virtual won't have this problem, but those in every-other-day classrooms will, because they will be going back and forth. Also, how is a hybrid teacher supposed to manage planning for A and B days, as well as the virtual asynchronous learning that is supposed to happen on their off days? How do we expect teachers to teach full-time in addition to planning for virtual learning, as well as them teaching their own children at home at night? With a full-time in-person option and a full-time virtual learning option, it's a win-win for everyone. They're risk mitigation strategies that can be put into place to make school a safe place for everyone." It's often suggested that the hybrid plan gives more stability and control, but I suggest it doubles the exposure. On the off days, many kids will be joining other kids at daycare centers and houses to mix and mingle with other kids, thereby creating more exposure. It'll make contract tasting more difficult and create an unstable routine for children. West Des Moines, Waukees, Southeast Polk, Norwalk, including other large private schools, are all offering full-time and person option. Surely Ankeny can figure this out as well. How can you make a decision for us when you didn't ask us for feedback in the first place? We deserve the opportunity.
That was our three-minute mark. I'm sorry, Sarah. Looks like next is Jay, so I'll get him added on. Hey, Jay Hudecheck is our next communication from the public.
Presented by the district. I want to talk about how it provides that it gives the safest, most responsible way for our students and staff. It allows us to act and enact the safety protocols that mitigate some of the risks that come with COVID-19. I'm entering my 26th year of teaching, and throughout my career, I witnessed daily sacrifices by teachers. And a few years ago, I sat in a staff meeting about what to do if we encounter an active shooter in our school building. The presenter played to dramatize reenactment of the combine shooting. Tears flowed throughout the entire room as the presenter went on to discuss the different situations and how to react to them. Teachers never once asked how to protect themselves or about their responsibility to their own families or their own children. Staff always pushed back at any strategy that didn't save every life in the school building. They pushed on. If there was a lockdown, how do we save that child out in the hallway? Whether that meant they had to go out there and get that child and risk their own life, every staff member was willing to do it. Teachers' own safety doesn't matter when it comes to students, but today is not the day to ask our teachers to die. Today is the day to protect our staff and students and approve our 50% return-to-learn hybrid plan that allows us to enact the safety measures properly that can save our lives of our staff and students. So I'm asking our board to vote tonight for our hybrid plan to protect our staff and students that continually go out of their way and do everything they can to ensure their safety and their well-being. Thank you.
Thank you. Samantha, I believe Lydia Hornung is next on the list from the communication from the public. Just state your name and address.
Okay, can you all hear? Hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Lydia Hornung. I'm at 2107 Southwest White Birch Drive, Ankeny, Iowa, in Prairie Trail. I am a single, working mom of two and a full-time leader in the central ag business here in central Iowa, John Deere, largest employer in Ankeny. I've served my community for six years as the leader of the chamber, which is the largest chamber in Iowa, and I've served on various committees in central Iowa. I appreciate your service, and I know what the time and commitment needed for this is. In addition of everything that Sarah had shared, I am the other person that helped her launch the petition that has over 1,800 students or 1,800 parents signing it. School is more than education. It's the emotional and mental well-being of our children. Our businesses will suffer, as families will have to choose, and we will eliminate, and we will eliminate extra spending at our local businesses and restaurants. Our businesses will not be able to attract and retain top talent, and this will create economic disparity in our community, something we've worked so hard to make happen in our community. Those who can afford private education will. We will be losing the diversity and inclusion we've worked so hard to create, and the parents aren't gonna mess around with the six-week increments. They will leave, and they're already starting to leave, and this is happening. Our private schools are filling up. For those of you arguing it's only six weeks, employers, landlords, mortgage companies are not gonna be flexible. We're already seeing the article in the Des Moines Register. People are getting evicted. This is the reality of the society we live in. FMLA is only gonna last so long, and for our single, working parents, they will struggle, and they will not receive all the full benefit. And they're not gonna be able to educate their kids, or they're gonna have to go to work. People will sell their homes. We've already started to see this. I love this community more than anyone. I brag on this community every day to everyone. And this is the beginning of the end, of everything we've worked for, if you approve this 50/50 model. I am asking you tonight to vote no. Tonight, to vote no for our students, our teachers, our communities, and our businesses. And I'm making a motion that you approve a 100% return-to-learn model tonight, or you survey our parents and vote again in one week from today. Again, those who want to stay at home, they've got that option. Give the parents the option to choose the right that works for them.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Samantha, the next name on our list for the communication from the public is Nancy Bocky. I'm sorry if I mispronounce your name. If you could just say your, state your name and address for the record, and then you can start your three minutes.
I've got you unmuted, Nancy. Oh, I don't, I'm not sure we can hear you, Nancy.
If Nancy is having technical difficulties, we can move on and then come back to her. Samantha, do you know is that something that we, that we can do, or is she indicating that she is?
Yes, I'm gonna, Nancy, I'm gonna give you my direct line if you can call, and we'll do Jason Dagel first, and then we'll move on to Nancy.
Okay. Thank you, Nancy, for being flexible. We'll try to get our, get the tech working as best we can for everyone. Jason Dagel, if you can state your name and address for the record, and then you will have your three minutes. Thank you.
You bet. Jason Dagel, 4404 Southwest Summersby Boulevard here in Ankeny. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, and thanks for your service and thoughtfulness on this topic. It's not an easy one. Our community is struggling. Our teachers are torn, and our kids need learning and socialization. It seems that everyone wants a solution to be schooled, but the reality is that in a pandemic, school can only be part of the solution, and we have the potential to exacerbate the situation if we don't return in a safe, responsible way. Since March, we've all longed for a return to normalcy. Our school's history of trying to be all things to every person, so it's not surprising that now, when our society craves to return to work and play, we look to schools to return that, to lead that return to normal. However, a full return to school will be anything but normal. It will be but days, or classrooms of kids, or entire buildings of kids, or for an indefinite amount of time due to exposure, because we cannot properly implement social distancing in our classrooms. The same kids that teachers and counselors have hoped to access since March to check their well-being will again be unavailable to us for longer periods than just a day, because they will again be at home for a period of time when we investigate new outbreaks and how they got exposed. There is much that is inadequate about, or inequitable about COVID, and it's not just in how kids access online schooling. We know that disadvantaged minority students and their families are more greatly impacted by rates of infection and by rates of death related to COVID. The exposures those families experience as a result of a full return will only exacerbate those inequities. I empathize with parents who want to get back to work or who already are back at work and need to make a plan for kids who will be at home if we go back less than full-time. And I have sympathy for students who might not land on the same day as friends in a hybrid model. I'm a parent, too. However, a hybrid approach allows us to better engage in sanitation and social distancing practices, ultimately making exposure less likely and attendance more predictable for families. Those of us who work in the classrooms know that it will be challenging to socially distance at 50% capacity. It will be impossible at 100% capacity, meaning exposures will be higher, increasing the number of tests and investigations each time we have to close. That means longer closures for families and more subs for teachers. A full return is anything but predictable, even though that's what we want it to be, and it's certainly less safe than other options. Finally, I'd be remiss if I did not point out your role as an employer and my role as an employee. There's a trust between us that you will do what you can to make the workplace safe for us as teachers. Sending teachers back at full capacity, knowing that social distancing cannot be accomplished and spread is inevitable, violates that trust and will be hard to recover. I have taught for 21 years, 18 of which have been in Ankeny, and I have never lost a child or colleague to an illness that was passed to them in school. If COVID statistics hold true in Ankeny, that streak will end this year without decisions that mitigate risk. You have the power to decrease that risk. Despite the added work for me as a teacher, please use that power wisely and vote to implement a hybrid approach over a full return. Allowing us to return, sorry, allowing us to learn about and respond to our new normal with the greatest level of consistency for families and safety for all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Samantha, are we able to get Nancy on?
Yes, I have her on my phone. Nancy.
Okay, go ahead.
Nancy Bocky, 1336 Southwest Radcliffe Lane. I'm here to share my views as a veteran teacher and concerned citizen of Ankeny. One thing I think we can all agree on as a community is that we all want to go back to school traditionally. However, I also want to use the First Street Ramp to get on I-35, but the experts have determined otherwise. In other words, what I want and what needs to happen for the good of the whole aren't always the same thing. What I know, however, is that it will be detrimental to my learners and to me to return to school in a traditional fashion with all students in attendance on all days. Maslow tells us that reaching our highest potential cannot be achieved if our safety and security needs aren't met. I can't imagine many 17-year-olds being able to focus on lit analysis when they're concerned about whether they'll carry COVID home to a parent. And I know teachers won't be at their best as they worry through their day, and rightfully so. It's a valid concern that's backed up by science. I know there is an opt-out plan, but with the majority of students in the classroom, the safety of our kids and teachers is still threatened, and that is not an environment that respects learners or teachers, nor is it best practice for achieving educational standards. From a logistical standpoint, the necessary protocols of adjusting passing periods in order to minimize contact will be much more productive when there are 600 instead of 1,200 students in the building. When every class period starts with students wiping down their desks, it will be much more efficient when there are fewer people in my room doing that at once. In other words, because of the new and necessary protocols, when the building is full, the learning time will be significantly decreased. In the name of efficiency and maximizing learning time alone, a hybrid model lends itself much better to achieving academic standards. What I also know is this. A hybrid model, in which I can safely distance my students throughout my classroom, would allow for a better learning and teaching situation than if we returned to learn at full capacity, where I would be forced to teach from one spot in my room in order to distance myself as best I could. With the combined efforts of safe onsite environment and strategic onsite learning for which teachers are being trained, students will be able to flourish. This will be different from the optional learning from last spring, because students will have accountability measures built into the hybrid approach, and they will have an opportunity to learn new onsite practices in a smaller environment. As a mother and grandmother, I emphasize that it is difficult for parents, and I know it creates childcare challenges. However, I simply ask that my life and the lives of my colleagues and students be considered when we look at our return-to-learn plan. I ask you to consider the rising number of positive cases and listen to the voices of the people who know the classroom the best. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up on the agenda is Jim Cowger. Samantha, is he ready? Jim, I would ask you to state your name and address for the record, and you will have your three minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
My name is Jim Cowger, and I live at 1006 Southeast Wanda Drive in Ankeny. I come to you this afternoon as a citizen, taxpayer, and employee. Later in this meeting, you'll be asked to approve the return-to-learn plan as recommended by the dedicated professionals that were asked to create it, and I urge you to approve this plan, which calls for hybrid learning to start the year. I come from the teaching world, but it seems clear to me that our mistakes since April have come from a rush to return to normal instead of taking a reasonable, measured approach. This plan does not, of course, eliminate all the risk to the health and lives of students and staff, but it does reduce that risk. Instead of 27 in a stuffy room, 13. 600 trying to wash hands at 32 sinks, not 1,100. And time to teach and nurture in a tense environment. But let us not deny the risk and its consequences. The people with whom I work and the students that I teach have shown that they will do everything it takes to teach and learn. But to expect staff and students to risk sickness, permanent loss, or worse, stretches that goodwill and dedication. And anyone who dismisses their serious concerns as far-fetched cheapens that spirit and determination. If in six weeks' time we look back and decide we were too cautious, what is the cost? But if we refer, turn to full-time, face-to-face learning and find out we did so too quickly, the outcomes could be disastrous or catastrophic. Make no mistake about it, the hybrid plan reduced risk while moving toward the goal we all want of full-time, face-to-face learning. It is wrong, fundamentally wrong, for you to have been put in a position to ask your 1,800 employees to risk their health or lives to fulfill our shared mission. To mitigate the risk, given the potential consequences, is necessary to maintain the spirit of collaboration and trust that your employees enjoy with this board and community. We know that you are dedicated to the cause and that you care about the important job of educating our students, and we're anguished with sadness at what has occurred and the position that you and we have found ourselves in. But we are encouraged by your dedication and support. The vote you cast tonight will be, in my estimation, of 31 years of teacher leadership, the most important of your tenure, because the level of concern among teachers that I represent is the gravest in 31 years. The vote will not be forgotten.
I have three minutes there, Jim. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have Sue Terrasi. Sue, are you able to hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. If you can state your name and address for the record, and then your three minutes will start. Thank you.
My name is Sue Terracy. Address is 326 Southeast 10th Street, Ankeny. Thank you for the time and energies these last four months and for allowing me to speak this evening. I am a school nurse. In that role, I am responsible for the health, safety, and well-being of my students. I support the district's recommendation for returning to school in August as the safest for our students and school employees. As a school nurse, I spend much of my time tracking down student immunization records, immunizations that are administered for preventable diseases. In Ankeny, 97% of our students are fully immunized, which tells me that Ankeny families place great importance on strategies to avoid preventable disease. COVID-19 is a preventable disease. However, we don't yet have a vaccine for it, and no treatment should a person get sick with it. The only mitigation strategies at this time are those that we've been hearing about since February. Wash your hands, don't touch your face, wear a mask, and keep six feet of distance between yourself and others. The Science of Public Health and Epidemiology considers community spread of a disease to be controlled when the test positivity rate is sustained at 3% to 5% for two weeks. In Polk County, as of today, our rolling seven-day average test positivity rate is 7.4%. Last week, it ranged from 8% to 12%. We are nowhere near community control. This is important, because a report out of the University of Washington showed that in countries with low community transmission, there has not been a significant increase in the rate of COVID-19 cases when schools return to in-person learning. While in countries with higher levels of community spread, there was increased transmission among students. Schools in two countries were forced to close again because of surging community spread. There is much debate about, but little scientific consensus about how much or little this virus affects children. We've learned a lot about this virus in four short months, but any of the studies or research that have been done aren't replicated, aren't peer-reviewed. Most have small sample sizes and are only for a short period of time. We just don't know. We don't know what we don't know. I'm also concerned for the health, safety, and well-being of the 80 adults who work in my building. We know that there are inequities in learning among students of low socioeconomic status and minorities, and minorities, but there are also inequities when people of these same subgroups get the disease. There's so much more that I'd like to share with you that shows that we need to take a gradual approach with returning to in-person learning, but my time is running short, so I'll leave you with this. In 20, 50, or 100 years, we'll look in the rear-view mirror and be judged on how we handle this disease. We get one shot at it. I want to be able to say that I did everything I could to keep students and school employees safe. If we make the wrong choice, think about how you'll respond if your grandchild says, "Grandma, Grandpa, what did you do? Why didn't you stop this?" Hybrid option with reassessment in six weeks is the right choice. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up on our agenda is Christine Thompson. Samantha, is she online?
I do not see Christine Thompson. Christine, if you joined via phone and have the ability to send me either a chat or an email, I just need to know... If you joined via phone, I need to know which phone number is yours. Next on the list, I have a few people who have requested to be added to the list here in the chat box. So next on the list is Amber. Amber, I have you unmuted now.
Thank you. Amber Gustafson. Good evening. Thank you so much for giving me the chance to speak tonight. My husband and I have lived in Ankeny for 17 years. We operate a small business with two full-time employees who work out of our home, and we have three children who attend Ankeny schools, an 11th grader, a 9th grader, and a 6th grader. I'm asking you tonight to vote for the hybrid model. Our family has chosen to keep our kids at home this year to learn through the online option. And I want to be clear, that's a choice open to all Ankeny families regardless of the outcome of this vote tonight. So if I have already made the decision for my family, why am I here advocating for the hybrid option? The answer: Because it is the best choice for everyone, given the circumstances in our community. The coronavirus pandemic and our state's weak response to it has left schools and parents in a very terrible would-you-rather situation. The options aren't would you rather go back to school or learn at home, because that's a false choice. That implies that we're returning to school the way that it was when we left it in March. The real would-you-rather is would you rather have a little bit of a bad thing or a whole lot of a bad thing? Choosing the plan that offers only 100% online or 100% face-to-face learning is choosing the would-you-rather option of a lot of a bad thing. It's the only plan under consideration that maximizes both of the worst parts of reopening schools in an uncontrolled pandemic: maximum social isolation for many kids and maximum COVID exposure for all the rest, plus teachers and the community as a whole. This is an untenable position. The hybrid model minimizes the worst of both worlds by allowing kids to have some face-to-face interaction while lessening the chances for spread and easing up on school resources. It also allows our district time to figure out where we go from here. We are in uncharted territory, and we need time to adapt. Yes, the hybrid plan asks the most of parents. It is inconvenient. It will bring many challenges and unknowns over the next six weeks. It creates hardships for many families, hardships we need to work together as a community to address. But here is what I know about every parent here tonight. There isn't a single one of us who would hesitate to give our eyes, our kidneys, our right arm to make sure our child has what they need. That's part of being a parent. Kids in Ankeny need the hybrid plan. Let's work together as a community over the next six weeks to create something beautiful. Let's link our arms as parents and teachers and create an unbreakable safety net that won't let a single child fall through the cracks. Let's implement the plan that minimizes the worst and allows us time to adapt. Let's get this right. Please vote hybrid. Thank you.
Thank you. Samantha, I guess you have the list of who's next.
Yes. Shelley, I have you next, and you are unmuted now.
Okay, thank you.
Shelley, I'm sorry, I forgot to say, if you could state your name and address for the record, we would appreciate that. Thank you. Sorry.
Good. My name is Shelley Northway. I am at 501 Northeast 8th Street. I am hoping that you vote for the hybrid. I want to thank you guys for your time. This has been difficult for everyone, and I appreciate everything that you are doing to keep everyone safe. As much as I would like for my children to start back on a normal schedule this fall, I just do not see that a full return is the safest move. I would like you to consider the hybrid option. This will allow schools to open slowly and safely. With families having the option for online, this will also make the classroom sizes smaller and easier for these teachers to manage the new COVID safety measures. After the semester, we revisit it. There's no outbreaks. We move on to the next level, and so forth and so on. There are just too many unknowns with this virus, and every time I turn on a news, I see large groups getting together and more kids getting this virus. And even though it may not be a significant amount, I think that one is too many, and if we can stop that, if we can manage that, that would be the best option. And I also feel that those in the community that need the help of others because they are full-time parents, the community will step up. There are people out there that are doing daycare, wanting to open up to help out those parents that do have to work full-time. So vote for the hybrid. Be safe. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Samantha, who do we have next? Do we have Christine Thompson back?
I haven't searched Christine for a second. Nope, I don't. Next on the list, I have Laura. Laura, you are unmuted.
Laura, Samantha, sorry, Laura, if you could just state your name and address for the record, we'd appreciate that. Thank you. Then your three minutes will start.
Absolutely. Laura Lucci, 1006 Northeast Lakeview Drive, Ankeny. Thanks for your time. I appreciate it. My goal right now is to share and for you to hear a middle ground. Emotions are very high. I think everyone is exhausted with not only the return to learn, but just the situation that our community and the country is in right now. But I do think there's a way to move forward. I support the petition that has been circulated of 100% return to school as a parent. I want to say that this decision did not come lightly, and in no way do I care about the health and safety of my children any less than anyone else. I think it has been said by all parties involved that the goal is what is best for our students, teachers, family, and community is in moving the vote one week to its original date of August 4th and to survey the teachers and parents. The numbers will speak for themselves. The numbers may result in what happened in Waukeze. There were enough online that in-person, 100%, and virtual, 100% can be done, and it can be done in a safe manner with lower numbers. The plan to have parents find alternate care, I know, is something that has come up frequently. In my background and hearing a lot of other people's backgrounds, I think the big piece of this to think about is what is the guarantee of the health and safety of those students in an alternate care situation? Supervision, abuse, physical, emotional, sexual, access to food, teenage pregnancy, not to mention the education and social development of these students is at risk with the hybrid model. As a community, the district should hear the collective voice. Take a survey and find out. One question: Would you support 100% virtual and 100% in-person? And which would you choose? I would implore you to make a motion tonight, one of you. Please make a motion tonight to extend the vote one week and take an additional survey. This is reasonable. It prejudices no one. In fact, it ensures voices are heard at all socioeconomic status levels, all family makeups, blended families, traditional families, whatever that looks like, two working families, one-parent families. An additional week does no one any harm. Please make a motion to extend the vote and take the survey, and the numbers will tell us what we need to know. Then this weight is lifted from everyone. The numbers will speak. There can be a middle ground. We do not have to have this divide. Please extend the vote one week. Thank you.
Thank you. Samantha, do we have anyone else on the...
Yes, we still have a few. Brian Adams. I'm not able to unmute you. Brian, are you able... Can you hear us? That was from the last... Okay, I'm sorry, Brian, I'm going to go on and move to the next one. I'm sorry, I have quite a few requests here. This is Brett Johnson. Brett, you should be unmuted.
Hey Brett, if you can state your name and address, and then your three minutes will start. Thank you.
Yes, thanks, Lori. It's Brett Johnson, 2204 Southwest 18th Street here in Ankeny. And at the risk of sounding redundant, I do want to applaud and say that I appreciate views on all sides of this issue. I know it's a pretty polarizing topic, but I do support a choice of either full return or remote option. Obviously, the full return is still coming with some of the recommended safety precautions. My request, similar to Lydia and I think Laura, just pretty much stole my words, Laura, that we gather data from both parents and teachers. I would request and support a motion to delay and poll teachers and parents to get real local data on what they would choose. And if it's truly a polarizing issue, you would end up with 50% full return and 50% wanting full remote. Problem solved, and that overcomes the concerns with the spacing that are used as the primary argument for hybrid. I support choice in this matter and a postponement of any decision until that data can be collected. I think many of us can agree, we can argue data all day long and skew it to the view that we want, but if we follow the American Pediatrics Guidance, coupled with the actual local teacher and parent input, then a fully informed decision can be made. So today, without that decision, I believe it's not fully informed, and who knows? I could come out on the wrong end of this, and the outcome could be people want a hybrid. But at least we would have the data and local perspectives for a fully informed decision, and whatever that decision is, I will accept it. Thank you.
Thank you, Brett. Okay, Samantha, who do we have next?
Okay, I think Brian's got his phone working now. Brian, I have you unmuted.
Hey, thanks, Brian. If you could state your name and address for the record, and then your three minutes will start. Thank you. Brian, are you there? I think we may have lost you again.
Okay. I will move on to... I'm sorry, it's hard to follow this all. I have an Amy listed. I just need to find what her last name was. I'm going to have to find that one in a moment. I'll go to Gracie here. Gracie, I have you unmuted.
All right, am I... Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Gracie, if you can state your name and address for the record, and then your three minutes will start. Thank you.
All right, I'm Gracie Valerio Garso, and I live at 4915 Northwest Fifth Street. Okay, so can I...
Go ahead.
All right, so I am a rising senior in Ankeny Centennial, and I've been listening to the school board meeting and following along with everything that's been happening. I was going to stay silent, but when I saw that there was a petition made by parents to decide for us, I was quite surprised and shocked by that, especially how people have mentioned it now as it's been a parent-signature thing. We are students that are actually going to be there and experience what's going to happen to us. You argue about mental health. I am a student with anxiety and depression, and I agree that being at school helps me. But this is going to be astronomically different from any studies you might bring up to say that mental health is going to improve, because right now, it's going to be different. There's going to be social distancing. We cannot collaborate as we used to. We'll have to wear masks, and communication will be different. I'll be able to only see half my friends with a hybrid plan, but I would rather do that than bring it home to my parents, not to mention the people that are immunocompromised. I have a lot of friends that are immunocompromised, and I do not want to risk their health or their opportunity to learn and collaborate with other people just because of my selfish desires or the desires of my parents. And my parents full-heartedly agree with me, and if full school is going to be an option, I'm going online, and that's just probably going to be the decision of many. So, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Gracie.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gracie.
Okay. The Amy I was looking for. Amy, I have you unmuted.
Great, Amy, if you can state your name and address for the record, and then your three minutes will start. Can you... Yeah, we can hear you.
Am I muted now?
Yes. Yes, if you can state your name and address for the record.
Hold on.
Okay.
That's okay. I... My name is Amy Polpeter. My address is 3015 Southwest 24th Court. I'm a parent here in the Ankeny Community School District, and my husband and I work some odd work schedules, so we are actually able to take care of our kids during the day if it goes to a hybrid. And we have family in the area who also will help us take care of our kids. But we are an anomaly. We are not the norm, and we know that we are blessed with that. What I am worried about with this hybrid model is the actual emotional well-being of our kids. There is study after study out there that shows that the kids need to be in school. There are also a lot of research. I actually work in research. I'm a scientist. There is a ton of research out there that shows that kids going back to school does not increase the transition or the transmission rate of this virus. I highly support the recommendations of Laura and Brett that are suggesting sending out a survey to the people in the district and delaying this vote by one week. That allows you to get not just the teachers' input. I understand their concerns. I have elderly parents that I would be concerned about them catching it too, especially if I was a teacher. However, I also am highly concerned about my kids and their well-being. My sons have suffered since being out of school since March. I have done my best to try to teach them, but my degree is not in teaching. And to imply that it's as simple as wanting to drive onto the I-35 entrance ramp off of... On to... Off of First Street, that's way simplifying what teaching a kid in today's world is. I tried my best to teach them in March, but I... It's been hard, and, you know, and I was home with them, and it was hard. I can't imagine for parents who work all day long. I highly ask that you guys delay this by one week. Take a survey of the parents, like others have said. You may find that there's 50% of people who are going to go online, and there you have your 50% return. Thank you so much for your time for letting me talk.
Thank you.
Okay, I have Brian on my phone. Brian, I have you unmuted.
Okay, sorry. Brian Adams. My address is 602 Southeast Wanda Drive in Ankeny. The question that my family and others that we've talked with have revolved around exactly what a day at school and the hybrid model will look like for our students at different grade levels. The public forum that I was fortunate enough to be able to attend, unlike many others due to capacity limits, frequently referred us to the return-to-learn document, which is being to answer many of those questions. Specifically, what will recess and lunch look like at the elementary levels? Social distancing, kids in that age group, seems like it's going to be a detailed thing that we may need more information about. Will middle schoolers change classes or have restricted movements? Are interactions with their friends limited? It is a vital point in their social development as well as their increased learning and education. What exactly are the mask breaks going to look like? How often will they happen? For how long? A lot of the points made in the community forum highlighted the importance and measures that will be planning to be taken regarding social distancing, which I love and respect because I think that that's... because I think that that's a vital piece of this. However, if a six-foot social distance is able to be maintained, will students be allowed to remove their face coverings if we opt for the hybrid model? Or other options, extracurriculars like PE and band, are they gonna have masks for those? Requiring masks to participate in PE? The 100% online option, which I'm, again, very thankful to have those options available to us as a community. What's that actually gonna look like? The optional learning that was made available this spring raised significantly more questions in my mind and the mind of a lot of the folks that I've spoken with regarding the level of instruction that our children would receive in a virtual environment. And I know that it will be significantly different. And I know I heard that and I took that away from the community forum, but I don't feel that we've been provided with adequate information regarding either of these options to make an informed decision for the best mode of instruction for our children going forward by the 31st of July. We're also curious about what's being planned to make up for the learning and the content that our children missed out on between the spring break and the end of the term next year. Is the curriculum being adjusted to try to cover some of those content areas? But I thank you very much for your time and I just appreciate your willingness and like many of the others on the phone. I would have loved to have more communication as a parent and have my input requested. And I do ask that you do survey the parents prior to voting. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Megan Anthony. Megan, I have you unmuted.
Hi, my name is Megan Anthony. My address is 504 Southwest Carriage Court in Ankeny. I'm a school nurse in another district where we have determined it is in the best interest of our students, families, staff, and teachers to go back full-time while also offering an online component. In doing so, we surveyed our families and asked them what they were comfortable with. 94% of our families, so that they felt safe for their children to return to school full-time. 6% of those parents wanted an online model and we are providing them with that. I'm asking you to please survey the Ankeny Community School District to determine what's gonna be the best choice for their children. After listening to several people here tonight, I have a few follow-up questions or things that I feel like have not been discussed. During the forum last week, it was made clear that the Ankeny Community School District hopes that employers will work with parents to allow them to care for their children on the days that they don't attend school. I have yet to hear what the Ankeny Community School District plans to do for their own teachers and employees who have students in the district and will need care half of the time. School is not daycare. However, for single parents in dual-working households, the hybrid plan simply does not work. The fact of paying for daycare is astronomical, especially when parents have not budgeted for this expense. Many families have already been significantly impacted financially by COVID and simply cannot afford another huge hit to their bank accounts. What will be the financial impact in our community? When will the asynchronous learning take place for working families? After parents pick up their children from daycare, as many know, there's simply just not enough time in the evening to do so. By placing children in daycares on school days, we are increasing the exposure to COVID, not only to our own children, but also to the staff and teachers in the Ankeny schools. If they attend school, do a daycare on Tuesday, probably not wear a mask and social distancing will not be enforced. And then return to that same classroom on Wednesday, thus exposing their classmates and their teacher and other staff to potentially double the amount of contacts. I am asking you to please consider voting no tonight and moving forward with a survey to parents to find out how they want their children to learn. As others have stated, it's quite possible that your survey results will show that not everybody is going to return 100% and will help with our social distancing anyways. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, I have Christine Thompson who is on our agenda. Christine, I have you unmuted, so you can go ahead.
Okay, thank you. My name is Christine Thompson. I've been a professional school counselor for 23 years. I've spent the last 12 years at Southeast Elementary in Ankeny. In the last 10 years, working with students between ages of 5 and 12, I've seen the level of anxiety in students in what I would call normal circumstances rise considerably. The school year before us is setting up to be one of considerable challenges before it even gets started. Ankeny teachers rise to challenges every day, and no doubt that they will this year as well. One of the main factors that impacts the anxiety of children is their experience of being able to make accurate predictions in their environment as well as how the adult in charge is feeling or reacts. If we were returned to school at 100%, the likelihood of teachers and adults within a school that students depend on to be consistent and reliable, being able to consistently and be reliably present in their classrooms is unpredictable at best. Think undeniably, learn better when the classroom teacher is able to lead the learning and routine. This is just one reason that teachers come to school when they're not feeling well or even ill because they know that student learning is going to be better when they are present in that classroom. With the current pandemic, teachers cannot risk exposing students to illness, even if educationally they know being present in the classroom will increase learning for students. The likelihood of students being taught by a revolving door of stuff that students are unfamiliar with when teachers are sick will lead to less learning and raise anxiety in many students, especially those looking for the comfort that comes from having their persistent, reliable teacher. In addition, when adults feel safe and confident in their environment, they protect that same safe and confident learning environment in their classroom. I believe teachers and staff want all students back at school all the time. When we feel confident that the teaching protocols have successfully been put in place that feels confident that the safety of everyone is able to be managed, if after six weeks we can celebrate success, then carrying that positive message with us as we move to the next phase will be phenomenal. If adjustments have to be made, they are more likely to be small ones that keep us moving in a forward direction of being able to operate in a more fully open manner. I truly believe that we will function better going forward with the hybrid model and I hope that that is the position that we take tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have Ross on next. Ross, you are unmuted and may proceed.
Hi, my name is Ross Ager. I live at 540 Southwest South Lawn Drive here in Ankeny. One wrinkle I just wanted to kind of bring up and bring to people's attention, I haven't heard anybody mention yet, is the other staff in the building as well, in addition to the teachers. These buildings, we have a top-notch custodial staff here in Ankeny, but there are only so many of them and they're only working so many hours. It's really easy to say we can just go ahead and sanitize more and clean more when you're not one of those people who have to try to do that. I have total faith our custodians are gonna work really hard and do fantastic, but they are human. And having full capacity in these buildings is gonna make this extremely, extremely difficult. Not to mention if we risk getting our custodians who are in contact with all of these kids at full capacity, we put them at risk of being sick and missing time as well. And then that's gonna make it even harder to sanitize and keep these schools clean. And then I keep hearing talks about socioeconomic impact. A lot of these custodians are the providers for their families. You get them sick, that's gonna affect socioeconomic. It's just something that I'd like to also be considered because I don't hear many people talking about that. The teachers are very important, the students are of utmost importance, but this affects everybody. And bringing everybody back to full capacity, it makes things just near impossible for anybody to get done. Not to mention just getting the supplies to accomplish these things for everybody. Just wanted to get my two cents in there on that.
Thank you Ross.
Okay, next we have Jennifer. Jennifer, you are unmuted.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jennifer Zwagerman. I am at 2007 Northwest 31st Street in Ankeny. And I know from experience that this is not an easy decision. I am personally struggling with the online and hybrid models myself where I teach at Drake. But I will say that the hybrid model gave me confidence when it came out in the ability to send my incoming kindergartner and third grader back to school. The trick right now, I think for everyone, is trying to find what level of balance works best for you as a parent and as a family when it comes to managing risk. And I know for our family, the hybrid model gave us the confidence that we would be able to have that social distancing, that our kindergartner and our third grader might have the opportunity to sit at desks and not have to wear a mask all day because they would have some distance. And at those ages in particular, trying to keep a mask on a kindergartner while they're sitting that close together is next to impossible. And so for us, you know, if you gave us an option where it was solely online or solely in person with everyone coming back, that was a much different discussion and a much different decision to be made than the hybrid, where even at Drake, our classes, I won't be seeing all of my students during any given week because of space requirements. The six-foot social distancing is going to be required. And that's simply following the public health guidelines and I think important for our schools to be able to incorporate at any age, K through 12, as much as possible as well. We've not been able, you know, as a country, to come up with any good plan moving forward. And so no matter what you do in terms of surveys, you're gonna get a million different opinions. And I think the best thing we can do right now is to make a plan, let people move forward and plan the six-week interval, lets people make that decision. If the state of the virus improves, in six weeks, we can come back to person and I think that would make a world of difference for kids as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next I have Colette. Colette, you are unmuted. We can't hear you. Colette, are you there? Switch. Hello? Okay, I will work on that one. Next in line, we have Raina. Raina, I have you unmuted.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. My name is Raina Paper and I'm a high schooler from the Ankeny School District. My address is 1901 Northwest Logan Street. And I would like to bring up the issue of transportation, especially buses. I know that personally, I am not dependent on the bus system, but many other students are and how this would greatly affect them and the school district themselves. Like, the school district would have to, if we went back to full capacity, hire more bus drivers as well as purchase or rent more school buses. This would be, school buses are not cheap and this would be a great dent in our budget, which is already not very good. Another thing that I was brought up was school activities such as band and choir. Currently, band is outside, six feet apart, and also wearing masks going both in and out. And this would be very difficult to do if we went fullback, especially if we thought about choir. Not that many people in band or choir would be able to fit in the rooms because there are at least 200 in both activities. This would cause for people to have to wear masks as well as not be able to social distance, which are both CDC guidelines for a reason. Those two work in tandem and must be practiced with each other in order to be effective. As well as schooling would be a great issue if we went back in full because the same issues would occur. Something else that would be an issue would be the providing of PPE to the students who cannot afford it themselves. That would also come out of the school budget. Or the students just wouldn't have it, which would be unacceptable because they have the right to be protected if there are going to be 1,200 people around them. And lastly, if we went back in full, it would be the beginning of the end of safe education. These people would not have the opportunities to learn in a safe environment that they have the right to. And I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I have Colette here. Colette, you can go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Okay, great. My name's Colette Crox. Our address is 3110 Southeast Grant Street. And thank you for allowing us to be added to the list today. I wanted to also join in and ask you to please move the vote by week to get family input. My husband and I moved to Ankeny eight years ago and we moved to Ankeny specifically for the school. And watching all of these other school districts having parental input and family input, it's been really hurtful and almost felt like, okay, well, Ankeny District doesn't care what families think and what, you know, our input has gotten missed. Especially families like mine, special education families, because, you know, we have other things to consider as well. That was particularly hurtful. And if you could get family input and all families. The food insecurity and internet survey only went out electronically. For families who don't have internet, they didn't get family. Make sure all families in Ankeny are surveyed. And a comment about the hybrid schedule, if there could be a vote on that, like the schedule, as there was for the first day of the school year. Because kids, especially now, need stability and routine. And this constantly rotating schedule is not good for them and it's also not feasible for employers. Whereas if there was a schedule like Monday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday, an alternating Fridays, that is something stable and routine that employers and the kids could work with. And I think that would help with a lot of the fact that people are giving. Also, I don't know why there hasn't been any discussion about delaying the start of the year because if the indication in other areas, if there are any indications, people are gonna be scrambling shortly after the beginning of the school year because of a closure. Cascade Falls Aquatic Center had to close because of a positive on the first day they were open with significantly reduced attendance. Alcoa Tennessee, a middle school, just had a positive test within their first week of school with only one fifth of the student body attending in kind of a hybrid model like we have in a half possibly. And it just, one other concern I have is every parent has gotten this. Your kid wakes up, they have a low fever, 99 something, 100 point something. You give them a Tylenol, you send them off to school. Now, because of the closures in the spring, everybody got a PPO. There's no way that's not going to happen now on an even greater scale because people don't have the ability to stay home. So, those are the only things I wanted to raise and please, please get family input and weigh on this. There's no rush for this vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Ashley Cunningham. Ashley, I have you unmuted.
Thank you for all the work that Ankeny Public Schools has done. My concern is the planned schedule for returning in hybrid. The current Monday, Wednesday, Friday, Tuesday, Thursday does not give me a single workday that I can provide to an employer that I am available to work. An alternate schedule similar to Des Moines where it would be Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday, Friday with an alternating Wednesday would provide me Thursday and Friday each week to say that I can go to work these days. There is no stability in every other day. And the consistency for my first grader of seeing the teacher two days in a row and me having the consistency with an employer that I will be there and me having the consistency with an employer that I will be there on Thursdays and Fridays will allow me to better prepare for educating my daughter at home if that's what needs to happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Kathy is next. Kathy, I have you unmuted.
Hi, this is Kathy Poggy. I live at 1911 Northwest Lakeside Drive. I'm a grandparent and I provide daycare for two small children. And I have a couple concerns. Number one, I have just watched my grandchildren go two and a half months without any education while teachers were paid to teach. And I have relatives that teach in other states that they had to be online teaching the next week after those kids came out of school and they taught every day until the end of the year. And I get the fact that the teachers are concerned about their health. But so are your cashiers at the grocery store, your policemen, your doctors, your nurses. They aren't any more important than all these other essential services and the people that provide daycare for their kids. I really feel, so the teachers should have been doing something this last two and a half months. I have a special needs child that now we are going to have to look for outside sources to teach him and take care of his special needs that according to the American Disabilities Act, you people should be providing and should have provided the last two and a half months. And you have done nothing with it. So when the teachers are worried about their health, when you go to the cashier, you better thank her really loud because she's been sitting there through the whole thing taking care of your grocery money. Thank you.
Okay, and last I have Erin. You are unmuted.
Thank you. This is Erin Wendell, 8011 Northwest 37th Street with three elementary age children. I respect everybody's opinions and feelings. There's a lot of disinformation and stories we hear online, a lot of unknowns with COVID. I've particularly been privileged with information from packing plants where they've been tested. They go to and test each employee because of they were considered hotspots. And of those tests, 90% that were asymptomatic that were positive. So that, again, a lot of the facts and figures that are floating around, I still respect the teacher's position. The main thing I want to point out is that a lot of opinions aren't being shared, especially being with this meeting kicking off at 5:00. There's a lot of working parents that are commuting. And I would have to preface that with that being happened and a lot of people not able to give their input, what harm is there in delaying this and trying to get a survey out? What's the harm of waiting one week, maybe even two weeks if it takes that long to get the data? You know, opinions and feelings are tough to make judgments and decisions on. Facts and numbers kind of help drive decisions. And if, like the lady I mentioned, if it's 96% of, or 94% of families that want to see their kids go back to school don't even want to do what's best for families and their children. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
I could just get one more request here. I'm sorry. Okay. Rebecca, you're unmuted.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
All right, thanks. My name's Rebecca Stickford. I am at 3606 Northwest Beechwood Street in Ankeny. Alrighty, as with anyone else on the call, I would just like to thank you guys all for all of the work that you guys have done putting all this into preparation the last few months. No one could have planned just a few short months ago that we would be in this situation during 2020. And you have continually made the best decision for our kids and wonderful staff employed by our district. I'm a parent of, excuse me, an incoming first grader, an IEP preschooler, and a two-year-old. I would be lying to say that the last four months have been easy. However, I would call for full support of the hybrid plan starting this school year. But frankly, we are against our infancy of learning all of the effects of COVID-19. And we will not know for quite some time the long-term impacts, especially for our children. It is not a matter of if we will get a positive case, but it is strictly a matter of when. Statistically speaking, by limiting class sizes with the hybrid plan, we're getting children in class as long as possible with a reduced risk. Why wouldn't we take that reduced risk instead? With the accountability measures that are put into place, I strongly believe that this fall will not look like the spring. I know there have been some comparisons between school staff, teachers, and those of other essential workers that are doing amazing jobs, but they are just completely different. In a grocery store, you're only interacting with someone for a few minutes. While in a school, you're interacting with them for six to eight hours. The transmission is high, more high likelihood in a school than in a grocery store. Being a special needs mom, I also experienced firsthand what it was like to see my daughter regress slightly. But as I reached out to the school district to see, you know, what can I do as a parent to do a better job with my special needs student, they were more than accommodating, giving me tips and tricks that have helped my daughter through these last couple months. As others have noted, we are putting a lot of stress on our school district to answer a lot more global issues. The school district, while it plays a huge part in those impacts, they cannot and should not be the only source for solving all of these problems. And like others have noted, we could be looking a lot more at our employers to see virtual options. And I know that there are some options that, quite frankly, if you're a mechanic, you can't do that virtually, and we understand that. And families are going to have to be making alternative situations for those. But for those of us that can work virtually, I think that we could also be working with our employers. I know that this decision isn't made easy. I can, I would like to share that there are some data integrity with this survey that some people were responding to the survey that might not even have kids in the district still. And it's just some data issues with that survey, so just.
I have time on that one. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That is all of the requests that I had submitted.
All right then. I thank the community for their input and for their passion. And that is definitely something that we will be using moving forward. Next on the agenda is our consent agenda. The amended is exclusively personnel report. Can I have a motion to approve our consent agenda as presented?
Motion. Second.
Any questions on that consent agenda?
This is where we would offer a motion to postpone the vote.
Just one moment.
Not in the consent, not for this one.
Not in the consent agenda. Jessie is moving to her office right now. She is going to get connected, and then she can guide us on that as well, Ryan.
It should go along with the motion for that particular item.
Thanks, I'm still a rookie.
All right.
We're all rookies when it comes to Robert's Rules of Order. I was going to let Jessie get set up in her office, and then we will. Unless I see Mr. Krausman on here, if he has any legal opinion on.
I'm happy to agree with Erin that the time for this is when we reach that action item on the agenda.
All right, good.
All right, good.
I get to be right once today. I guess that's my turn.
Okay, so since we can't put that here, I guess the motion to approve the consent agenda, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Jessie, are you?
I'm here.
Great. The next item, information-only interim superintendent search process. Who's going to be leading that?
That's me.
All right.
Good thing I made it back to my office in time. You all should have, and I apologize, because we are live streaming this. There were some technical issues with projecting and also live streaming. So we opted for a live stream. So I'm going to narrate more than perhaps I normally would. There should be an addition board members to the board packet that you received last week that has just a few charts in it to provide a bit more detail about what we are thinking about the two superintendent, two related superintendent searches that are on, that are on our plate alongside the return to learn work. And I think probably, can someone tell me if you all received those? They should have been added today to the board packet.
I did not.
No.
Okay. Samantha, is there a way for me to project?
Yes, I'm going to. I'm going to make you the host, and then when you're done, click on my name and make me the host again.
All right. We will figure out the technology. Apologize if you're watching this on YouTube and we lose you for a second. Great. So let me share with you all a few things that we are thinking related to our superintendent search. As we've talked about a little bit in the past, and members of the board, as we shared with you a few weeks ago in one of our weekly updates to you, we're thinking about doing sort of two somewhat simultaneous, although one will be, I think, much more abbreviated, searches. First, for a more permanent interim superintendent, a longer-term interim superintendent, and then sort of a full-year search for a permanent superintendent who we would hope to have identified by the spring, giving that person enough time over the summer to get to know the community and then really come fully on board in the summer headed into the 2122 school year, which feels really funny to think about it, school year that's 2122. So what I will share with you here, and then I will make sure that you all get a version of this document as well that has some more information. But just a couple of slides. This is the process that we have in mind for identifying the more permanent interim superintendent. As I know you all can appreciate, with the return to learn conversations that are going on, this is not a great time to be short-staffed. And we want to allow Dr. Lindeman to get back to, you know, fully leading the academic services team instead of having multiple critical, critical jobs at the same time right now as we get ready for school. So what we would propose when it comes to searching for the more permanent interim is that we finish up some planning. We've been doing some planning over the last few weeks related to that, to the search for the permanent interim, that we would finish that this week and then really begin doing initial interviews with folks next week and preparing into the second week of August for selection. Our hope is that we would be able to do final interviews and have identified a couple of finalists by the end of August. And that by around Labor Day, you all as members of the board would have an opportunity to do some full interviews with a few finalists and make an offer to someone for that position by, like I said, around Labor Day, just after the start of school. I'll share with you here a little bit more detail about what we think this looks like in terms of board action, HR or in district action, and then opportunities for collaboration. Again, I'll make sure members of the board that this gets to you so you can look at all of these bullet points in more detail. But as I said, we're really thinking about, over the next couple of weeks, getting to a place where we have a robust cross-stakeholder group that's involved in screening some applicants, doing some initial interviews. So by the middle of August, we've sort of narrowed down and identified a few folks for the entire board to meet and have conversations with in hopes that by around Labor Day, you would be able to announce this is a person who will serve as the interim superintendent for this school year, understanding that while that person is in place, we will be doing a broad national search for a more permanent superintendent. I'm going to show you what we have in mind for that broad national search for a superintendent, and then we can come back and clear up any questions that you might have about these items. So the superintendent search, and this is again a slightly adjusted timeline from what we shared with you a few weeks ago in the board report. Primarily, we sort of shifted this work back by just a couple of weeks, thinking that it might make most sense as we prepare to head back to school to really focus our energy on getting that more permanent interim in place and then start laying some of the groundwork for that national search in August. So this is really like a shift of about two weeks from the original timeline shared with you. And we've shaved about a month off of the search for the more permanent interim. So trying to finish one before we really get into the other. Again, a planning phase, spending a few weeks continuing to do some of the planning that we have done. Really spending September, trying to engage the community in understanding and developing a profile of what a superintendent, a long-term superintendent for our community should look like. I think that looks like community forums, virtual or in-person, depending on what's possible. Looks like some surveys, opportunities for the community to be involved in helping to sort of craft the picture of who we're looking for in a top candidate. Then doing some work to prepare for talent sourcing. So developing a robust recruitment strategy, making a decision about whether we need to engage an external search firm or with some, perhaps some adjustments to some internal capacity, whether this is something that can sort of be project managed by this team in an effort to really have a localized, community-focused approach on casting a wide net, bringing in a national pool of candidates, but managing that from, from within Ankeny and taking the money that perhaps we would have put towards a search firm to boot some of the infrastructure that we would need to do that internally. So doing some talent sourcing, building out a real selection model. What is the process that we would ask candidates who are applying for this position to go through so they have multiple opportunities to interact with multiple groups of stakeholders and develop a really complete, robust picture of the candidates that we would continue to advance through the process? We would spend early spring, sort of pre-spring break spring with some initial interviewing and selecting of folks from a robust national pool of candidates that had been assembled. The goal would be that by April, I'm hoping after spring break, again, the board would have a small group of finalists, be able to really dig deep and do multiple rounds of interviews with those finalists, do some public time with those finalists, and make a decision by April, which would then give us at least a full month toward the end of the school year for the person in that position to spend time, if they were not local, right? Getting to know the community, going out, engaging with the community, doing, you know, well, sometimes it's called like a listening tour, listening to the community. What are the things that are on your mind? What priorities need to be present as we head into onboarding and preparation during the summer, leading into the launch of this person's sort of full-time position at the start of the 2122 school year? And I'll show you again just a little bit more detail here about what we think each of these boxes looks like in terms of board involvement, district involvement, and then collaborating. district involvement, and then collaboration um with the community or on the board. So again, we see spending the, the rest of August, really doing some planning, getting clear about uh sort of internally the logistics for the search, deciding if we want to engage a search firm immediately or if that's something we could hold on deciding for a while. As I said, in September, doing some real acute community engagement. I see the outcome of that process is the creation of a profile of the kind of person that we want leading the district. See October, building out a really robust recruitment plan that involves lots of national search, involves lots of people, establishment of sort of a search committee for multiple stakeholder groups. Think that's something that HR could facilitate, um, but really as sort of the project managers of a cross stakeholder uh conversation. And then really doing that talent sourcing, figuring out the process for selection of a superintendent uh through the end of the first semester. In the early spring, activating that selection model, taking folks through selection, screening again with stakeholders from different um, different places in the community and setting the board up to do this final round of interviews in April, March and April. So a decision could be made in April. And then again, we have a few months at the end of the school year and into the summer to really set that new superintendent up for success and give them time to get to know the community um, and hit the ground running over the summer into the first of school. So we know that's a lot of text. I apologize that you all didn't have this um in front of you. I'm going to email it to you uh here momentarily, so you've got it. Um, but based on that quick review, I'm happy to answer any questions about process, things that aren't clear, um, things that would be helpful to know more about.
I'm not seeing everybody, but um.
Erin knows.
Okay.
Comment slash question, I suppose. Yeah, no, thank you for uh, it's very thorough. Um, uh, I, I think there's uh going to be a lot of community interest. Uh, it, will there be community, you know, kind of subgroups in part of the interviewing process or just on the development side? Maybe I missed that part.
Easy to miss it because I put a lot of words on every page. So that's on me. Um, I imagine there being a sort of a what I'm calling, we can call it something else, like a select, sort of two committees um, that are involved in this process that would involve members of the community. Um, one being sort of the screening committee, the people that are taking the first pass um, at the applications that we would receive and another being sort of the selection committee. I would love for us to really cast a wide net in terms of who has an opportunity to join those committees. Um, we could do an application, we could do similar to what we did with the um the family work group for return to learn where we had every board member nominate a few folks and every principal nominate a few folks um, to really get us, you know, some, some representation from across the community. I see those groups being much more involved in the year-long permanent search. If our goal is by, you know, Labor Day-ish, to have a more permanent interim in place. Um, I would still want it to be a cross stakeholder group, but I just, we're working on a quicker timeline, so we might need to have fewer people or just have a quicker process of identifying who's involved there. Um, but for the permanent superintendent, I'd like a really robust um, community engagement process. And I think we can pull that off.
I just wanted to ask about this interim search process. You talked about talent sourcing. Can you specifically speak to, I mean, I saw Heartland on their IASB um. At the extent, are there other folks you're planning on, organizations you're planning on working with there?
Yeah, I think for, for the interim, those are the first two places that I would start. We've also had um a handful of individuals who are retired superintendents who have reached out to us um, that I've been working to schedule some sort of initial um, just cut sort of conversations uh, over the next week or so. Um, I think if we have from Heartland, IASB um, and these folks that are retired superintendents in Iowa, we've got a group of, let's say, ten to fifteen um, solid folks to start with, if we want to stick with this timeline. Um, and we could adjust this, right? But if we want to stick with that, I think that's probably given. Uh, just given everything. Sorry, I hear some. There we go. Um, I think that's probably a reasonable place to start. If we come up with, you know, just two or three people, then we can cast a wider net, but that's where I'd like to start.
Who else do we have uh with any questions?
I have a question.
Jim, okay.
So for the interim, who will screen these candidates?
Yep, so what I would like to do, Jim, is put together a screening committee. I think it would include at least two members of the board. It would include a few administrators and we would have some community members. I think I see HR's role in this really sort of being the project manager or facilitator. Um, but I would like that to be probably a relatively small group. Um, if we're talking about this timeline, I would love to have at least a couple of board members um, on that, on that committee and then some folks, um, as I said, from the community and from uh probably a few administrators. You could also maybe talk about, you know, other jobs in the district serving on there, definitely for the longer term search. I think for the interim, we may want a slightly smaller group just to move more rapidly.
Well, I definitely believe that um, several board members should be on the screening.
Absolutely. I think on, on both, right? And I, of course, you know, I see the entire board coming together and talking to the finalists. Um, what I would like to do is come back to you all when we have uh another board meeting on Monday, sort of tell you where we landed this week um in phase one, how big is that pool? And then maybe we can have a conversation as part of that board meeting about, hey, which two or three of you would like to be on the screening committee, who wants to be on the selection committee? Um, uh, knowing that everybody will have the opportunity, everybody on the board will have the opportunity to be a part of those final interviews as well.
I have another question. This is, has to do with more of the permanent superintendent. And we, we talked about external search firm versus managing from within.
Yep.
And the only thing I, I have a couple of concerns of that, I guess, one, I think this year will be like no other for HR as far as uh working with our COVID.
Right.
So I think it will be buried in that. Uh, and I think it might be uh wise to have an external search firm just for um, I don't know, I just think that would be, I think outside sometimes helps us with um, I don't know. Uh, open-mindedness, yes.
Sure. Um, we can definitely, um, we can definitely talk about that. I'll say um, what I would love to propose to you all. Sorry, I'm just getting a little bit of, little bit of feedback. Sort of trippy when you hear yourself talking. Um, so I, you know, Ken and I have been having some conversations and I know we're not the sort of um, we're not the, the end of the, of the conversation, but we both do have access to pretty extensive national networks of folks that, to be perfectly frank, I think a lot of external search firms would, would tap into some of the networks where we've already started putting out some feelers and have a pretty robust group of folks who have already said, yes, tell me more. Um, I hear you and I deeply appreciate the concern for how much time HR will have. Um, you are correct, it will be a year like no other. Um, I'd love to give you guys a couple of options and give you a little bit more detail. Uh, you know, in the coming, let's say, two weeks about the networks that we've already tapped into. Um, so you can really make an informed decision about, oh, they're talking to these twelve national organizations of administrators. Um, is the best place for us to put the money into the search firm? The answer might be yes. Um, or is it to, you know, give us some like additional support to deal with some of the COVID um, like processing pieces and then we manage this internally. I frankly would be happy with either. Um, I just, in this initial conversation, didn't want to get into all the names of the people that we've already started just to talk to, just that are part of our professional networks. Um, and I would hate for us to, to spend money on something if we can get there just as far, just using the people that are working in the district. That's, that's my only, my only question for us to think through, I think.
Jessica.
Yeah.
So, um, um, and I also appreciate the work you've, you've put into this. And you mentioned that Ken, you and Ken have been having discussions on how to accomplish some of the things you know are important to us in that superintendent. Um, I'm curious what role has Ken played and then too, I know with some of the search firms, can we specify and look at their results? We can specify what we desire and see what their success rate has been in accomplishing that.
We absolutely could do that. I imagine if we decided that we wanted to engage a search firm, that we would probably bid it out. Um, and I think we could, you know, we could structure the, the RFP or structure the bid in whatever way with whatever sort of criteria um, we thought were appropriate for us to emphasize and that we would want to see and in people's responses. Um, I will tell you that as far as we have gotten, to be perfectly honest um, in thinking about uh the, the execution of this plan um, is what you are seeing here in a handful of, of conversations um, that have happened at the cabinet level that I've had with um our HR leadership team, Jody, Ken, myself. Um, and uh, and so there will be many, many more opportunities for Ken, for others in the district to be a part of this. But we are, um, our attention, I, I think understandably, um, since Bruce retired a couple of weeks ago, has largely gone um to return to learn. Um, and then sort of the mapping out of what we think this process will look like. Um, but I'll just, you know, underline one more time that I see sort of my role or HR's role as let's get the right people together to execute this plan. And I see Ken, um, the board, others in the district, others in the community as being really critical to the, the execution of this plan. Um, so we've just had some conversations at this point about, hey, these, you know, here's somebody we could reach out to um, that we know to start uh generating, generating those leads informally.
Okay, thank you.
You got it.
That, is that silence?
So sorry, I didn't realize I was muted. Oh, I'll never get this straight. Starting again. Je- Jesse, I can definitely see moving forward that um, this might be one of those times when we're talking about, you know, the that selection criteria, what, what the board sees is important, what we can work together, that, that definitely might be a work session that we can have.
I would echo that.
So, you know, kind of in your scheduling and, and this planning, would that falls in there? Might be something that, you know, we can get on an agenda pretty soon.
Yeah, I think that's right. We um, we can do that. I trust that someone else who uh like a, a Jen or a Darren or a Samantha is, or a Jennifer writing that down somewhere, is I am not um nimble enough to control the screen and talk and write that. But I agree, that'd be a great work session topic. You know, maybe in, once we get closer to the start of school in August or, or in September. Um, once we've made some of these critical return to learn session uh decisions, but, but before we get too far down the road.
Absolutely. And even if it's a short one about the interim and a longer one about the long-term superintendent, I mean, we can put those things into more bite-sized pieces as well. Does anyone else have a question for Jesse about this? I, I can't see everybody at once on my screen, so you might have to just pop open and say something.
I'm good.
Okay, great. Jesse, thank you so much and thank you for running back to your office so quickly.
Okay, I'm going to try really hard to stop sharing and then figure out how to make Samantha in charge again. She is telling me, right-click and make me the presenter again. Okay. Alright, I think I've done it.
I saw the little headphone flip. Samantha, are you back on? I am.
Did I make you the presenter?
Yep.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, so we're ready to move forward. Um, the return to learn pa- plan is divided out into two sections on our agenda. The first is um, the recommendation to approve the comprehensive return to learn plan. The second is to vote on the model that we will start the beginning of the school year on. Um, I guess uh we can start with the comprehensive return to learn plan on this. Um, I need a motion to approve the comprehensive return to learn plan for the twenty-twenty-one school year as presented.
Motion.
Second.
And this is where, does anyone have any questions about the comprehensive plan?
Uh, I don't know if I have questions, I just want to make some comments. Can I do that?
Can, can we clarify the difference between the comprehensive, like is this, so this is the three options or, okay, just checking, thank you.
Multi-dozen, hundred-page document that has every option, everything so far.
Which, which option is, is the hundred percent online option? Is that in this one as well?
Jen, if I can um ask you, Dr. Lindeman, the availability of the one hundred percent virtual option, is that built into the comprehensive return to learn plan?
So I needed to take myself off of mute. Um, the remote learning option was actually a requirement of um the state that came out. Um, and so it's required whether it's written in here or not. We have aligned our remote option to the required continuous model that you find in this return to learn plan. So everything that will happen in our remote learning environment will align to that required continuous guidance that you can click on and read.
I, I'm the voluntary portion of it, meaning that are we voting with this to say we're allowing the voluntary? Because that was our option to open it up for voluntary, correct? Or am I, am I still missing that?
You're missing that. We're, we're required to offer that or we, we are offering the voluntary version of the remote learning to all students. That's happened.
We've, so we've already, we've already agreed to that.
Yep, we're taking um applications, yep, this week, we started.
I, I wasn't sure where that came in. I didn't realize that that was how that process went, so I'm fine with that. I just was, wasn't quite sure where that fit in.
So Jen, would it be correct to say that this first uh A to A is just looking at whole return to pla- uh learn plan, all three parts and just the work you did, correct?
Correct. Keeping in mind, the state asked every district to create three contingencies. So this plan is our comprehensive plan as required by the state for all three contingencies.
All I'd have to say about it is I, I can tell you worked your tails off and detailed and it took forever to read. And I appreciate everyone's work and I know it wasn't easy and uh I know there's hundreds of people that worked on it, so I thank you for your work. And, you know, obviously, we can be in and out of all three of these all year. And so they were all important and no matter where we land later tonight or next week, this work uh is valuable and I appreciate all the work that people put into it because I know they put their heart and souls in it and a lot of people gave up their summers. I understand that.
Agreed.
Does anyone have any um additional questions for Dr. Lindeman or anyone else about the comprehensive plan? No, I'm seeing no. Okay, um, all in favor of approving the comprehensive? Um, all in favor of approving the comprehensive return to learn plan for the 2021 school year as presented, um, all in favor, yeah, say yes.
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 Yes. Um, opposed. I see none on there. Great, thank you, everyone. Next, we have the return to learn hybrid model. Uh, the motion, may have the motion to return, to approve the return to learn hybrid model for the beginning of the 2021 school year. Motion.
Second.
Um, this is where we have questions, I guess. Uh, for the um, return to learn hybrid model that is being recommended for the beginning of the school year.
I'd like to put forward a motion to postpone the vote and give parents an option, option to respond to a survey.
Um, I I have a question procedurally, maybe Jeff can help with some of that. Make sure we have.
We have.
I'll try to. I want to make sure we have enough ample discussion around um the the plan on the table. And if we motion second this now, um, does that preclude us? Um, um, from doing that, let's say we vote to table it. I just want to make sure the order of this uh uh comes in correctly. I don't know if I answered that correctly.
Um, I I have to mute myself so I don't cause feedback to you, so I can't hear anything you're saying now. But here's the way this works. A motion to postpone to a definite time, for example, to the next meeting takes precedence over the main motion. So, once that motion is made and seconded, it's debatable and it has to be voted on before you vote on the main motion with regard to the hybrid plan. Uh, if it if it prevails, obviously, the the item is moved off this agenda and onto the next meeting's agenda. If it fails, you can still vote on whether or not to approve the return to learn hybrid method. I hope that answers your question. I'll, I'll, I'll turn myself off and.
Uh, what I want to, yes, I just one point of clarification and just hypothetically say we we it's motion second. Um, it's voted to be tabled. Um, then we're not able to then uh discuss the item or we could still go ahead and discuss the item today. Um, but we're just not voting on it today. I just want to make sure that before we lock ourselves into something or not. Uh, that we understand this order of operation a little clearer.
In the course of discussing whether or not to postpone it to the next meeting, you can certainly discuss uh why you think it's the right plan and why it should be acted on now. So I don't see the range of debate um being limited in any way. Uh, since this is on our agenda and uh and therefore it it it's a topic you're uh allowed to explore fully in the course of debating this motion as well.
Okay, so one last question, one last question then. So do we have to immediately vote on this amended uh amend uh motion before we go into that discussion? Or can we have that full discussion, vote on the second uh amendment? Up or down and then mo- move on to the next, the the primary one? Again, does that, I hope that makes sense.
You can debate um the 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 reason why not to postpone this decision, including why you think this is a meritorious decision um to to adopt the hybrid model. You you can do all of that debate um before you vote on whether or not to postpone it to the next time. The the motion to postpone is also amendable. Um, not that that is is likely to be an issue here, but it's debatable, it's amendable, but it has to be voted on before you can move to the main motion.
Okay.
Okay, perfect. I just want to make sure that was clear. So I'll go ahead and second Ryan's amendment and then we can discuss it and then deal with that when we're ready to vote on these two um motions then.
Okay, uh, for ease of operations, Ryan, since you were the one who uh created the motion, um, why don't you state your case?
Uh, it's very simple. I just think that um it was a an error not to ask the community for a specific opinion on what choice um they would choose. And I think that they um should have the option to let us know.
So I'm gonna push back on that a little for two reasons. One, um, offering the three options, creating three options as directed by the Department of Education was never about offering feedback, gathering feedback. It was not about surveying your community and and seeing what they it. And I know that's going to upset a number of people, but the reality is the Department of Education asked us to put three models together so that we could respond to the coronavirus situation in our community. Um, and our district has put forth what they believe based on current data, what is the best recommendation. My second concern with delaying it is that folks who are choosing um uh the, help me out, like the family option of distance learning. Um, that survey closes on Friday and so folks um who may have felt comfortable in hybrid um may be forced into choosing to go online if there's fear that we could be choose onsite next week. So those two um timelines kind of butt up with one another. If that, I I hope I'm creating clarity with how I explain that um scenario.
Lindeman, would we have any ability to amend the due date of July thirty first for the virtual learning?
Were you directing that to me, Ryan? I didn't hear, I I think you said my name, but I wasn't sure.
Yeah, I mean, or whoever would have the answer if 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 we were to postpone the vote, would that due date of July thirty first to sign up for the virtual option, could we push that due date back or is that kind of a set date?
Well, we always have the ability to change a date. Um, the challenge becomes in the implementation side of that because we've got to provide that learning environment and we have a timeline for engaging all of the folks involved in that, building principals in particular and teachers in particular for what that looks like. So I know Jesse's got a timeline out there also for staff that may come into play here. Will you share that, Jesse, your timeline for the staff survey?
Yep, I sure will. And and just to to second what um Dr. Lindeman is saying. Um, yes, we set that deadline in an attempt to give ourselves as much time as possible to make the kind of matches that we are going to need to make between staff who have requested an accommodation for the most part to telework. Their deadline is also the thirty first of July. Um, and for students, I can tell you that right now we have several hundred students who have um who have requested this and in the neighborhood of forty staff, eighty percent of whom are teachers. And the mechanics involved in making sure that all of those kids that are doing online learning are paired up with a teacher who's also going to be teleworking. It's gonna be another ten thousand piece puzzle and as much time as we can get to to make that, um, make those puzzle pieces fit together, um, the better.
Could, can you share that data again? I I what what were you saying about the groups that are selecting what I I guess?
Sure, we have, um, and I'm gonna round here, but as of this morning, we have three hundred and thirty students who have uh selected the all online option. And in the neighborhood of forty staff, um, about eighty percent of those are teachers um who have reached out to me. Now, not all of them have yet finished completing the the paperwork required to request that accommodation. Um, several have emailed me directly or have called me, but I would say are sort of in the process of requesting that accommodation and and building sort of classes, right? For those teachers with those kids is going to be a complicated prospect. Um, and so as much time as we can have to do that, um, the better everybody is gonna be for success.
Okay, I heard the eighty percent and I was trying to figure out what that meant, that that helps clarify.
Yeah, most, yeah, so far, as of today, most of the people who have requested that accommodation are teachers.
Yeah, are these these accommodations, okay, so these, this isn't necessarily voluntary accommodations per se, right?
This is ADA.
Okay.
Accommodations, yes.
Would you, would you say that this um, there's a lot of people waiting for this vote to decide whether they choose online or not? So that would exacerbate? Or what what is your feelings on that?
Um, I don't know how to answer numerically to that question and or what a lot means, but I I could say that um, I've been reading all the emails coming in like you have. And I do think that there are people who believe we can create a safe environment through the hybrid model and I would obviously be one of those people. And so when a school system can provide a safe environment for the majority of its learners, people trust us to do that. They want their kids onsite like the rest of us. If we go into a full um hundred percent opening, um, the concerns rise for many people in our ability to provide for a safe environment for their child. So I would agree with, I think, your your theory here that we would be then potentially pushing more people to that remote option.
And and just from a staff perspective, again, this is my gut. I don't have any um any hard data here. I would anticipate that there are members of um of a workforce who may um, you know, may have the right to request a an ADA accommodation for a health condition who, to Jen's point, feel reasonably safe um in an environment if they, you know, understand the mitigating context and the social distancing and that kind of thing. Who may decide that they need to request an accommodation um if they feel less secure. Um, and uh, in the mitigating factors in that classroom. So I wouldn't be surprised to see the number of staff requests for accommodations um go up. Um, and I think there are probably some people waiting to hear um what direction we'll go.
Um, Dr. Lindeman, can you um share um or and um clarify? Because I think there there may be some confusion that we're not, this isn't a vote for six weeks. This is a vote for a a plan. And you're, you've suggested evaluating it in six week increments um and and doing that kind of at the four week mark. So am I correct in that assumption?
I see. I think I understand your question, Erin. Um, so this is a recommendation for how we start the year. And I propose that we start that, consider that start as the first six weeks. And that at least at the four week mark, we reevaluate based on our data, what we are for the next six weeks. Um, where where we want to be. That's why we have these three contingencies, right? Fully online, hybrid, or fully onsite. The goal would be to go fully onsite after that first six weeks. I mean, that that would be ideal. I think that's, when you look at what our business partners have done in their businesses, many of them have done a fifty percent startup, had to do a fifty percent in some cases. And then as they've gotten better at those mitigation efforts and strategies, they ramped up. Um, that would be ideal for us. Uh, I, again, we have to look at what the state puts out to us in terms of decision making metrics the first week of August. Certainly, we hope they provide us some really good metrics to utilize. If they don't, then I think we have to create our own set of metrics. We have some ideas on how we might do that. But um, yeah, so I guess you're, the the answer to your question is the recommendation is for how we start. Me staying in that for six weeks and then coming back and saying, okay, based on what we know now, what would our next six weeks look like?
Okay, so you're you are saying this is a six week vote.
Say that one more time.
This is a a six week vote that we have to act again prior to six weeks.
Yes.
As a board. Okay, I just want to make sure that that's that's understood and clear.
Yes, we're gonna have, I'm hopeful that we'll have some metrics that will help us in that. That was the goal of this return to learn plan. The state was very, very clear that we would be potentially opening in stages and need to move but in between those stages, depending on the state of public health. I think there have been people across uh certainly the metro area that have convoluted that into a, you know, which one of these is, do we like the best? And generally speaking, I I'm actually tonight, I love the spirit of our community and the investment. It's just that this is more about public safety and health than it is about which would you rather do? I mean, this this is rooted in um safety and health of people, not rooted in what's your preference for schooling? I mean, the state has lots of ways to choose prefer, make, you know, to give preference to schooling. There's homeschooling, there's open enrollment, there there are options for that. So I I understand the spirit of our community wanting to have more input um in terms of which one we utilize, but I really think as difficult as it is for all of you and all of us, I think it is a leadership challenge in terms of that decision making based on what we know to be best for the safety of students and staff.
So one of the things I'm struggling with is is that measurement and what it is that we call safe and what it is that we call risk. And obviously with choices that other districts are making, um, that shows that there is a a difference of opinion in how those things are defined, right? And we as a community get to help define that. Um, because it's it's our choice, right, as a uh as a community. And I I'm always reminded, uh, and somebody today reminded me again that our middle name is community, community schools. Think about that and 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 how we have to make these decisions together. So I totally agree that the 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 there was some confusion over the the ABC choices. And and I I saw them more as a, these are what you're going to do when the state applies this to you. Um, because um from the early stages, administration was telling me that the hybrid was the the worst choice. Um, but we would do it if we had to, right? And so really, we're at this, do we have to standpoint and what are those uh guidelines that are saying? Um, one, one is safe and one is not safe and where that line is. Um, and I I certainly can appreciate that. Um, the, you know, what measurement are we gonna use in four weeks to say that it's time to move out or go the other way? Um, is really unclear right now. And so it 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 uh, it kind of adds to the 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 layer of confusion and difficulty in this decision. Because I don't know what criteria we're using to say it's safe or not safe. Um, you know, so but that's what I'm really, really struggling with that part of it.
Well, I would say um, when it comes to the criteria, that would have been a fantastic opportunity for our state leadership to step up and to give us that criteria before they asked us to put these plans in motion. Um, from my perspective, because, yeah, nobody likes working when they don't feel they have good data to work with. Um, but good data to work with doesn't mean data that isn't appropriate and helpful in a way. I mean, yeah, I want my kids to go back a hundred percent too. But um, from my personal opinion, uh, if we are comfortable telling the entire school district that we have to go back a hundred percent in person, online, then we are comfortable than forcing families to choose online. Because that is the only option. If you're taking hybrid off the table, then you are telling people it doesn't matter if you want to go to school a little bit and ease the way in and and lis- and listen to the metrics that will develop from this that we're content with you not going at all. Because if you choose the hybrid option because of what has to happen for that, I mean, if you choose the online option for what has to happen logistically for that, we're telling those families they have to commit for the semester. And so rather than take a short term, six week approach that says, we've seen what happens in our country and in our state when we go full on in and open everything up. And then we end up in a situation like now where we have six, seven, five hundred cases a day and hospitalizations going up. Do I want to throw my kids into that? No, I'd like to see, I'd like to see us take that six weeks and measure it. And if we are great and nothing's happening, fantastic, I will take every I told you so that comes at me when it comes to that. But if if it's us coming back in a hybrid mode for six weeks or it's me telling a lot of families in the community that not only does it not matter that you want to also take it slow and safe for six weeks, you have to go and have your family do an entire semester online. When you would have been okay in a hybrid mode, that level of taking away. That level of taking away people's choice and telling them that we don't want them here. How hard is forcing a family to do online for a semester versus asking them to do hybrid for six weeks? I don't know. Uh, that's not something right now that, that's not a road I'm willing to go down for, for a large number of families in our district. Especially when we know that this situation, like Dr. Lindeman said. And like you said, this is going to be fluid. We're going to be floating back and forth between it. But when we're asking families to commit now to a semester of online learning. I don't know if I want to take their choice away of coming back to school in a hybrid mode. As much as everybody wants to say they have a choice, I. I don't know. For people who want to come back full on, they still get to come back to school. And it might be 100% in six weeks. But I don't know, I'm not.
So.
I'm not happy with that.
If, if, you know, we've got four weeks to go roughly before the start of school and add the six weeks, it's 10 weeks. Um, for our communities, our state or whatever to do whatever it's going to do, up, down, sideways. Um, uh, it, next week, when you get the, the rules for this is what, what someone has deemed safe. And it's below our threshold, which I'm not sure what it is yet. Um, does that mean we'll go ahead and start? Um. Full on because now that metric is, you know, below that threshold. Um, this is why I'm really having a hard time understanding what we're getting into here. And six weeks is a long time. I mean, it's not long in the, in the life of, of, you know. Uh, an individual necessarily, but, um, when you're talking about the, you know, the circumstances and, and, and. The things that people have to deal with with employment, six weeks can be a long time. So I'm looking, again, we're, we're, right now, we're looking at a 10 week decision. Um, if we're just going to say we're starting this way right now. If it's fluid, then it's fluid. And then we can make that decision at any time. So we can start. Any of the three ways, if it's really kind of a fluid type of thing, so.
I think, uh, I just think part of the reason that we were either going to do the vote today or next week. Was to give families opportunities to do planning in addition to, you know, staff, putting a staffing plan together. And matching that up with distance learning needs and those sorts of things. So, well, I get that it's somewhat fluid. There's a lot of large decisions that. Um. Are correlated with it, which is why I think we and many other districts are trying to make decisions today or, or next week. And I would just add in, in terms of your data question, Erin, um, I second that it's frustrating that we don't have those data sources. I think it's a pretty general rule of thumb, um, to look at your case numbers and your positivity rates. And in the state of Iowa, Polk County is just exponentially, it's just higher when it comes to cases. And the positivity rate is, is higher. And so, and the other concern I have is the communication that was shared with us that Polk County Public Health believes that the cases in our community are going to double. Between now and the start of school in the next six weeks. So I do feel like we have, while I agree with you, it'd be great to be able to produce to our community and I hope that we can. Actually, I hope the governor gives us great metrics to say, here's some guidelines that you should use. But, um, in, in the meantime, I think we've worked with, we've worked with what we know, you know? It'd be great if we could get any specific data, but we've been told repeatedly that we can't have it. So I'm sorry, Jim, I cut you off. Okay, go ahead.
Me?
Yep, go ahead.
So we haven't really talked about the merits of full time versus hybrid. And again, my biggest concern about this whole thing is that if we go to hybrid. Every other day, kids are in school. Every other day, elementary kids could be in a multitude of places. They could be in a daycare. They could be at home, they could be with their parent because their parent had to quit their job. Uh, so we've got a lot of those scenarios. Secondary, middle school, high school kids, uh, on the opposite day when they're not home. Or when they are home, they could be out with friends. They, they could, so what I think is going to happen if we actually do hybrid. I see double exposure and a higher increase of exposing our staff to the COVID. Versus keeping them in one cohort every day. I think in elementary, now I know high school, there are different subjects, but if you had in a classroom, an elementary classroom. You could have those same kids with the same teacher in the same room all day and not be exposed to other environments. But there's going to be a lot of cross exposure if we do the hybrid every other day. And that worries me for all of our kids, kids, staff, parents, families, everybody. Cause I think we're introducing more exposure.
But Jim, don't you believe those kids are going to go, go to daycare after school anyways? I mean, I, I feel like parents are going to do what they would normally do enough. You know, I mean, like my own child, uh, goes to Treehouse after school. In a full onsite.
Have the option of before or after? Have the before or after school option?
I'm sorry.
I guess my concern is when you're doing this every other day, there's going to be just many, many more opportunities. Now, if you get out at three o'clock or 3:30, depending on what school you're in. I still think there could be arrangements where people could be home for their kids versus all day, every other day exposure. And that's just a big concern of mine and I don't see any answers for that from our committee.
Darren, would you be able to talk to us about what the logistics of running the schools is full time in person versus hybrid?
But before he, before he speaks to that, do you hear me? Yeah.
Yes, yes, I do. Thank you.
Um, I, I just have to ask, do you all think, do, and I'm asking all of us as board members. Do you all think this is an issue that we can resolve alone, whether it's full time or hybrid? Do you think that whichever option we come up with is going to resolve the concerns? Um, and the exposure risk and all of these elements involved that are impacted either way?
Oh, and I think that's an excellent, excellent point. I would love to be able to. I would love to be able to protect, protect all of our children. I don't want to speak for everybody, but I, I just, it's larger than us. That, that is a problem we cannot solve.
It is, and going to be quiet in just a second, but I personally, um. I feel like a lot of creativity and innovation can come out of this. Because in my experience, when I come against a rock and a hard place, because that's essentially where we are. Um, options and solutions come out of there that I would have never anticipated that sometimes. Work out better than what I was seeking out. And so as we have this conversation, you know, it started before today. Again, we all have to be open minded and consider the perspective of others. And also know that at the end of the day, we can't resolve every avenue of issue that results from this. Because it's not a school issue. But the school is a part of the process and, and helping to address the part regarding our students. But there are alternatives. Um, there are other things that will evolve out of whichever plan we decide to, to vote on. So Darren, um, I, I want to hear what you have to say.
I've been told that it's hard to hear me sometimes on my computer, so I'll, I'll lean in very close and I'll try to speak loudly and I apologize for my forehead. Anyway, um, the, uh. First of all, I have to say I appreciate so much the community involvement, um, that we have, that we have heard up to this point. Um, and it's, it's quite obviously, I, 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 it's why I want to live in this town. It's, it's why I moved back here a long time ago and it's why I've chosen to raise my own students, uh, my own children here in the district. Um. I, I think there's a couple of points that have come up over and over and over again tonight. That are incredibly difficult for all of us who are human beings right now to grasp. And unfortunately, it is, it is a reality that we are, that we're, that we're currently living through. Um, and it's very easy to pivot from those realities into what we wish it would be or what we feel is best for everyone. And the best for everyone is easy if you put aside the current situation that, that we're living through. And, and it's, you know, we, we, we hash the same phrases over and over again, unprecedented, but none of us have lived through this before. And so what, what I keep trying to do, um, and what our team has tried to do and what I will try to do tonight. Is to simply talk about what we, what we know now and what we can't know for the future. And, and what we know now is that, that I'm not a medical doctor. But what we've been doing over the past three months has been reading every study that we can get our hands on. What we know now is that there's been a lack of leadership in a lot of ways from our state as far as how to proceed. However, we're, we're following the CDC guidance to the best of our ability, day in, day out. And I have to admit, there are times where the CDC releases things that, that feel to resonate, like they resonate with my personal feelings on how things ought to be. And there are times that the CDC releases things that feel at, at, at odds with how I think things ought to be. Because of how I feel safe in some places and don't feel safe. And what I as a father have to think about for my, I own students and what I as a husband have to think about. My, my wife who's a teacher going back to school. But I think that if we ground ourselves in the CDC. That gives us at least a place where there's a lot of very smart people that are coming together and updating their guidance as we go forward. And, and this goes back to the, the, how do we make a decision? How long does, does the decision last for? We have to go with the best data we have. But I think we also have to look at the trend lines of that data. So nobody wants to be in a situation where we are in one mode today, a different mode tomorrow and a third mode the next day. And constantly trying to shift back and forth. So as we start to look at this data, we have to think about. Is it five straight school days above a threshold that we decide to move into a welcoming more students back? Or is it five straight school days or three straight school days where we drop below a threshold where we have to become more restrictive? Those are the conversations that, that need to come forward from our state and I hope will. What the CDC tells us right now. It says in their most recent guidance from July, uh, 23rd. It's important to consider community transmission risk as schools reopen. Evidence from schools internationally suggests that school reopenings are safe in communities with low SARS-CoV-2 transmission rates. However, data from Europe has suggested that reopenings further increase transmiss- transmission ri- risks in communities. Where transmission is already hot. And this goes back to what Sue Tracy brought up in her initial comment. Polk County's transmission rates currently are high. They're not in the completely uncontrolled rate right now, which would move us into the, everybody online. But they are high. I don't like that. I wish it were different, but it's the reality that we find ourselves in right now. So what does that mean for us? I was asked to talk about the logistics. Everything that the CDC is telling us aligns with the work that the teams have done all summer, which shouldn't surprise anybody. Because we've been using their guidance all along. But they're telling us that we need to spread students out as much as we possibly can. We need to provide the distance because this is spread through contact and time of contact. We need to spread students out. We need to, we need to try to keep, as Jim said earlier, try to keep students as much together as possible. Um, as far as a, a, a classroom, so that we're not, we're not intermixing any more than we absolutely have to. If we go to full, everybody back for August 24. I want you to just, uh, Raina, I believe, talked about buses. If we go back, everybody back on August 24th. We are by code required by transportation to every student that, that needs it. What that means is that there will be students on a bus, free to a seat. For up to 45 minutes on their bus ride, just before they even get to school. When they get to school with everybody there, let's say we, we have 20 to 25% of our students opt for the online. That still puts our large elementary schools at 600 students walking through the door that day. It puts a school like Centennial High School at 1,100 students walking through the door that day. Which is 200 students more than when we opened Centennial the year of the split. That's with 20 to 25% of students deciding they're not going to come back, which is about where West Moon is right now in their plan. So there is no space there to spread students out if we have 1,100 students at Centennial. Um, the spaces where you would spread them out are needed for things like lunch or PE or the classes that we would have to offer. So, um, you know, a, a class of 30, you're looking at 22, 23 students in that classroom. That's not even a, a desk per row really, when you start doing that math as far as what we would be taking as far as students out of that classroom. So the day to day operation, we would have a lot of hand sanitizer. We would have time for washing hands. We would work to make sure that the passing, um, is, is in one way rows and that work, that students are spread out during that time. Um, we'll wear masks, we'll have our staff with face shields, all of the things that are in the plan. But there is no way to provide maximal space between students and staff if everybody goes back right now. I don't know. Lori, did I, did I answer your question fully enough there?
Yeah, yeah, you did. We just, we needed to know what. And that doesn't, that doesn't take into account what the teachers have to do inside of their classrooms. Is that correct? And teachers are working on that right now and they don't know how to set up their classrooms. They don't know how to set up their curriculum. They, the longer we wait, the less time they have to plan for that.
So if you'll allow me to put my chief academic officer hat on for just a minute.
Yes, please.
And, and share with you that, um, particularly if we go back a hundred percent or even 80%. Um, we will be telling teachers to discontinue best practice. Our elementary teachers are already being told to remove all of the centers from their classrooms to make space to spread out desks. They will not be able to take 25 to 27 students and divide them up into groups and have them rotate around their centers using a workshop model. They will not be able to pull a small group of six to eight kids to the kidney table for instruction. Whereas if we can, if we can reduce that number to, let's say 50%. We can then spread those kids out in the classroom and also do grouping in a spread out manner. We can continue some of those practices, even in that. This, this is feels so wrong to me as a teacher at heart and as an educator. Um, we, some of the best things we know that work with student and learning. We are not going to be able to fully implement in our classrooms in order to put student safety and teacher safety. Above that particular practice. Um, if you've seen a kidney table with little ones, or even at the high school level, believe it or not, we use kidney tables as well. You've got that adult seated probably two feet from four or five teenage kids. Working on whatever they might interpreting a story, whatever it might be. Um, those are things that we're not going to be able to do. And I guess the other part of this, um, I want you to think about what you saw. And I'm going to, I mentioned it earlier, but what you saw. Our business partners around the community, around the metro do. After they reopened, when they reopened in June, late May, June. Our teachers will be walking into classrooms to start the year like they do every year. Jim, you more than anyone, and Katie, I guess too, know what this looks like. The first good week or two is teaching kids routines and procedures about what school's about. What does it look like when we go into our lit circles? What does it look like when we get out our take home folder? What does it look like? And we teach and teach and re- reteach. We do that K, pre-K 12. Well, now we're adding a whole nother layer of structures and routines and procedures for those teachers to teach kids. When do we take our masks off? When do we have our masks on? What do we do with our masks when we take our masks off? Where do we keep our hand sanitizer? When do we hand sanitize? When do we wash our hands? How do we get from lunch to the, uh, back to the classroom? How do we go to music? What does recess look like? I mean, we have a lot of different components that our teachers, I know can do this. But to do that with 25 to 30 kids in a classroom for two weeks. Given the level of anxiety on top of it all. I, I just, I really want to build this. Our kids haven't been in classrooms since March. When I think about a student not being with a teacher. He, those students that have been in school that for whatever, two years, 10 years, 13 years. They have not been live with a teacher since March. Our teachers are craving time to build relationships with kids, to understand where they're at in their learning. To figure out what's missing, to accelerate their learning back toward those state grade level standards that they may have missed. And, and that has to be the priority on teachers' minds as we begin this year. And anything we do to take away from that is going to reduce. The amount of time they spend in, in instruction with kids, we become less efficient, we become less effective. And they're going to spend a lot more time figuring out how to logistically make it all work. As opposed to digging into what it is their students need and with skills, standards, and how do we go about getting that? So I. So I I just, that's my chief academic officer side coming out, just thinking about what our classrooms look like generally when the first week of school comes along. And now, given five months off plus elevated anxiety based on what we're seeing in our data in the community.
Amy, did I see you add something?
Yeah, a a couple of things. Um, I'm a little confused by the daycare argument because just two or three weeks ago, our emails were filled with daycares are safe and can be open. Why can't we be like daycares? And now the argument has flipped to daycares are not safe. Our kids shouldn't go there. So I don't I don't understand that argument being flipped like that. Um, so if anyone could clear that up. Um, and then I want to talk about the mental and social emotional health that gets brought up a lot, and it is an issue. Um, but I feel like everybody's talking about that as a zero-sum game. That if it if it can't happen five days a week, it can't happen. Like, kids can't start to rebuild that social and emotional health going in a hybrid model. Um, I I think they can. Now, I am not an education expert, so I would, um, yield to those that are. But I guess I'm asking, can we start to build that social emotional health even in a hybrid model and get those kids back to where they are feeling confident and like they are young, successful students?
And the same the same consideration for the teachers. Imagine how much more stressed it is, how much stress they're experiencing um, going into this this decision in these classrooms, wanting to protect their students and wanting to execute on a certain level, but being restricted by the logistics of it all.
So when I think about the teachers, um, you know, they've some have shared with me that their biggest concern, well, one of their concerns is if we do A-B, is that, uh, they're going to plan for an A-B day, a B-day, and virtual lessons. Uh, so it's a lot more planning, and then they're supposed to come a little later and leave earlier. And then they're all supposed to wipe down their desk and chairs in their classroom. Um, and there it is concerned about when are they going to get all their planning done for the variety of lessons they had to plan? And then go home and actually be a parent to their two kids that are maybe home that haven't had instruction uh, as far as they're virtual because their mom or dad are both been at work. So is there a way that we can somehow alleviate that? Uh, is a question I have.
Jen, is that something that you can address teaching-wise?
Yeah, I think in terms of the cleaning routines, Jim, that's going to be true no matter what model we're in. So
Right.
That's that's a reality. But in terms of the planning, um, process, um, yeah, as you know, um, should you pass the hybrid tonight? We do have a couple of options for what that hybrid could look like. We we proposed one, the A-Day, B-Day, and, um, some feedback around that from teachers and others, and and I think families was they would prefer a more consistent um, Monday, Thursday, I'll keep it tonight in the comments, Monday, Thursday group, then a Tuesday-Friday group with Wednesdays being alternating. And I, when I think about either one of those models, let's take that one in particular, if I'm a teacher and I'm planning for my Monday-Thursday group, my plan for the Monday-Thursday group is similar to the plan that it would be for Tuesday-Friday. Now, it's different students, so I've got to be ready to differentiate. But in terms of the standards and skills we're working on, I'm planning for the same types of standards and skills on those two days. And then I'm planning for what can I engage my students in asynchronously when they're not with me? Is and that's essentially why that late start on Wednesday. Could I videotape a model of myself that kids could watch at home whenever they're at home? And then maybe when they come back on that Thursday or Friday, I'm doing that small group instruction based on that modeling. I I think the teachers need, this is where I think a decision helps our teachers start to frame their thinking and start to plan for, okay, this is how I'm going to manage my planning from week to week, knowing that this is what the cycle of learning is going to look like for my students.
So the virtual has been promised to be much better than spring when, because we've had a lot of training and all that good stuff. So will they be planning, like, will the kids be in front of their computer for seven hours, two hours? Because, I mean, there's a big difference on, I can't imagine uh, all the planning for teachers if they were going to be on the on their computers for seven hours. Maybe I'm just confused.
I think maybe you are, Jim, because the required continuous learning portion of our plan, which is fully online, I think we're used. That's what those, um, families that are opting into that will experience in terms of a full day. For kids that are going through the hybrid, that's going to look different because they have a teacher that is with them on their two days and then is providing asynchronous learning on their platforms for when they're not there. It's the same teacher.
Right, right. I understand that. So there's just follow-up to their lessons during the day, right? It's a follow-up to the lessons they had in in person, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So, um, I know a lot of families are thinking that it'd be multiple hours, and if they can't help their kids with it till they get home from work, if they're both working, that they'll be uh, not fulfilling their role as parents, feeling guilty, and so, and if. Hello. So my question is, like, how much of this will be screen time on the off days of a hybrid? Because varying, it depends on the support kids have. Some might have it during the day, some might not till night. So if that is something that parents could hear about, that might ease some of the concerns.
I understand. Go ahead. Go ahead, Deshara. Help me quiet.
I just wanted to speak to that just a little, um, from my understanding, because that was a question I had too, Jim, which is a legitimate question. Um, the school day is composed of so many elements, including the large group that they're with, and the teacher's time is split in those directions. Uh, the the youth have, the students have specials and all of those pieces that make up a day. So all of that time wouldn't convert to screen time. It would probably be two or three hours at the most when you get to the core of what they're learning, I would guess.
And Jim, I would just add, you know, you and I know, uh, the value of the collaborative team has just increased exponentially, right? Many hands make light work, um, and the level of interdependence that's going to be required by all of our collaborative teams to be able to help support one another in the planning is just going to be these, we are not, teachers are not going to be able to do it alone. It's just the work is insurmountable on on their own. And so I'm personally grateful that we have such a robust team structure in our system. Now, I know that's not every single teacher. I know we certainly have some singletons at the high school levels that still exist, but by and large, I see teams just, um, and I'm not saying that's that's not the solution. It's not that's not taking away the problem, but I do think that's a benefit that our system has is strong teams to collaborate in building that virtual work and the onsite work.
Probably more important during those collaborative times, as far as face mask and distancing, will be more important when adults to adults than adults to kids. So I I don't want that to be, because I think kids will be safer as a cohort in their classroom, whether it's half the class or the whole class with one adult, if that adult isn't intermingling with other adults throughout the school throughout the day. And so that's another concern I have is, you know, how we got to protect the kids and the teachers by keeping them in one place. But I know planning is critical, so in that people see will have to really be rigid about spacing and their face mask, all that stuff. And I'm just trying to think out loud here.
Yeah, I I just simply meant from a, all right, I'll upload this document and share it, and I'll do this document, and I'll put this, you know, game together so we can set, you know, just
Right.
Just we know is the typical, you know, shared load, um, just be really important. Regardless, honestly, of what model we're in, but I see specifically in the the hybrid and the if we were to go to a remote setting, so.
Jim, I think that's why you saw in our original hybrid model, we had Wednesdays as a day for staff to collaborate and plan and engage in learning. And with the governor's announcement a week ago, we had to move to fifty percent. So we're still going to have a late start on Wednesdays. Um, but a little later start to allow teachers as much time as possible for that collaboration Katie's speaking to, as well as the planning. And I do think, I I mean, I do think it's important to note that, as you heard speakers tonight, the teacher speakers in particular, um, not one of them was concerned about the 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 planning time they would invest because that's the kind of teachers we have in Ankeny, you know, they they know they're going to do what they need to do for students to learn. Every one of them spoke to their dedication and their collaboration in that. Um, that's the kind of teacher leaders we have here. I'm not saying it's going to be easy. It certainly is not. But when you have, when you have the kind of teachers we have in Ankeny, they're willing to do that in an effort to keep their kids and their colleagues safe.
I would say too, just to add, um, you know, we've had dozens and dozens of of adults collaborating on this plan over the summer in a format that looks exactly like what we're doing right now, Jim, that they don't have to be in the same room in order to get that collaboration done. They can do it from the safety of the screen.
Yeah, I'm I'm just saying, I've had staff share that concern, so I didn't want it to be unheard.
Sure. I just, I I'd like to circle. I've just been thinking a lot about Aaron's request for, you know, some for some clear metrics. Um, and and I, and then I'm thinking about Deshara's comment about innovation and creation and you know, I I we're not going to have those metrics tonight, and we're not going to have them next Monday to make a decision either way. I I just, um, the earliest I think we'd have them from the governors next Monday, and I don't I just don't believe that's probably going to be the case, but but there's hopeful thinking. I do think once we get those, um, I do think if they aren't clear or, um, they're vague, I think we have a great responsibility and a great opportunity to work with, um, other metro schools to come up with some consistency, uh, whether it's around transmission rates or positivity, you know, what positivity rates, whatever that is. Um, and if our communities can all get on board with the same metrics to say this is what we're using to decide if we're bringing all of our kids on site, I I think that has a tremendous amount of power in our community, in our county especially. And so I would hope, um, that that's something we're thinking towards. Um, I just think that's a a gift we can give the the greater community. Um, and and frankly, it would carry a lot of weight because we all want our kids back in school, you know, um, and and we know that exercises such as social distancing and, um, you know, all those sorts of things make a big difference, um, in in how that can work. So, yeah.
No, I would hate, for me personally, I would hate to let, um, the search of perfect get in the way of the good. Um, we're we're not going to have every answer right now. Um, frankly, I would be pretty shocked to think that we could come up with a survey, implement a survey, give people time to respond to a survey, and analyze the data of the survey in a in a week. And then take that information and have to weigh that against every single bit of criteria we still have to weigh. Like Katie said, um, we're not going to get the the cases aren't going to go down in a week. The things that we all we have to think about aren't going to change in a week. What's going to happen in a week is we're going to have a deadline for online learning, and we're going to have teachers and staff who lose a week of their ability to plan for this moving forward. Um, I
I would probably disagree. I think we could get a survey out quick. We could turn that thing around in a couple of days. And I I do think that, uh, many of our community, uh, their voice should not be dismissed because we are a public school, we are a community school, and a lot of the people, uh, who have had not had a voice, uh, are also smart people. And, uh, not to dismiss what the committee has done, but again, these people are the ones that are bringing their children to us, and many of them want to be heard and right now are not being heard. So I just needed to say that.
I got to push back against that, Jim. We heard from a lot of people this week. We've never told people not to contact us, never told people not to attend board meetings. We've told a lot of people.
But I don't think we're necessarily doing what a lot of people want us to do. I I don't know. I think if we asked every parent, then we will know.
Even if even if we got five hundred emails, which we didn't, it might be three fifty, it might be four hundred by the end of today. That's still only seven percent of the households in our district. So, I mean, when we talk about a lot, let's keep that in perspective. Um, I have a question. Um, I'm just, I'm struggling with the CDC guidelines. Darren, you mentioned those. You know, as we look through their website, um, you know, we've gotten a couple of emails from teachers who, you know, looked at their classrooms and they said, you know, even at fifty percent, three feet of separation is going to be tough. So you know, I think, you know, like Lori, you said, it's there's not going to be a perfect situation. Um, but if you read through the CDC website, you'll notice that the recommendations are to maintain six feet of social distancing, and when that's not possible, or you think you'll be in a situation where that's not possible, wear a face covering. So it seems like to me, and correct me if or if I'm wrong, but, um, the face covering is an additional step to stay safe if social distancing is not possible. And it seems like it works. I mean, even on the CDC website, um, they have a case from a Missouri hair salon where two stylists tested positive for COVID nineteen. One of them developed a respiratory symptom, but continued to see clients for eight days, the other one for four days. Uh, both of them were wearing double-layered cloth face coverings or surgical masks when they saw their clients. And on appointments that ranged from fifteen to forty-five minutes, um, more than ninety-eight percent of clients wore a face covering. And none of the interviewed customers developed any symptoms of illnesses. And additionally, sixty-seven percent of their clients agreed to get tested, and none of them tested positive. So I'm having a hard time reconciling why we feel that it's not safe when we implement all of these social distant, you know, when we implement all of these, um, things that the CDC is saying that we can, you know, they're saying that if six feet is possible, you know, you don't need to wear a mask. If it's not possible, wear a mask. And it seems like it seems like that works, you know, I I guess. Do we do we disagree with CDC or what's our opinion on that?
I well, there's a couple of a couple of things, Ryan. One, um, I I have read the same study, and at the end of every paragraph where they tie it back to schools, they say, or research is needed to understand how this will affect students in the school setting. Um, the, because the the, I mean, it's obvious, but the the hairdressing situation is not the same as having a classroom full of students. Um, it can help us understand better, but it's it's simply, it's simply not the same. The the research that's out there that points to success in reopening is in places where they have gone with staggered uh, class arrivals with not having full classes back, with having smaller class sizes and further spread out. So so we have that research as well. And I think that what's important is is when we look at what the CDC says, I don't read anywhere in there where they say do this or do this. They say do this and do this and attempt to do this. There's no question that wearing the masks is important, but it also says to try to, um, be socially distant to the extent feasible. I think the the last thing that I'll leave you with is that the what we have to what the newest research is pointing to is the way that the virus is in the air. And so when we're when we're talking about what we're going to be looking at in school is not a matter of of the forty-five minutes, which is the maximum of the hairdresser example. We're talking about potentially hours on end with those same people in the same room. So we've got to be thinking about how we're how we're cleaning the air as best possible through there as well, which is another one of the and mitigation steps that the CDC points to.
Which we recommend to take, isn't that correct?
Absolutely.
Amy?
I I guess I go back to Aaron and wanting metrics. Since there are no metrics of whether masks work in a classroom or not, six weeks gives us a chance to get detailed, immediate metrics for our classrooms only. We don't need to look at anyone else's study. We know what the metrics are in our own buildings.
So
I don't
We're willing to say, well, there's no numbers, so let's just go fifty percent and see what happens? Like, I don't, I'm not comfortable with that. I mean, if we're really concerned Like, I don't, I'm not comfortable with that. I mean, if we're really concerned about the transmission, there is no 100% safe scenario except for 100% virtual. So.
No, but we don't have that option. We don't, the governor is not, we do not, the governor said the only way we can choose that option is if she tells us we can. It's, it's just not on the table for us.
But if, if somebody's being consistent, they will choose that option rather than risk the chance of spread. I mean, if you look at the numbers, um, that the Iowa.gov, um, puts out, I mean, the risk of, there, there's the, so I'll just go through them. Um, so there's 456,385 people tested. Um, this was as, as of today, when I checked. I mean, they changed, it's in real time. So, um, 9.32% of the people tested, um, were positive, 65.32% of the cases were covered. 1.96% of total cases, um, were reported as deaths. 1.37% were deaths with a confirming pre-existing condition. And 0.12% of total cases were deaths with no pre-existing condition. Um, now, if you look at the Department of Health, uh, the most recent data that we have is from 2018, uh, where there was 30,190 deaths. Uh, 0.66% were from influenza, 1.66% was from pneumonia, 3.63% was from unintentional injuries that were not motor vehicle accidents. And 1.13% was from motor vehicle accidents. So, um, I guess, you know, it's just to me, based on the numbers and based on the data, I mean, you can even look at the National Safety Council where, um, same year, 2018, um, 16.67% were heart, deaths were heart disease, 14.29 were deaths from cancer, 0.94% were from motor vehicle crashes, 0.9% were from falls, 0.18% was from pedestrian accidents. So it's just interesting because we live with these risks every single day and we accept them. And they're actually greater than the risk of the dangers of COVID-19 on individuals who do not have pre-existing conditions. And people with pre-existing conditions, the data shows it's actually more likely that influenza or any other unintentional injury is more dangerous. So I, I guess I'm not, I'm not advocating a personal or political or emotional reaction. It's just, you know, we're talking about numbers, we're talking about, like, it's, this is the local evidence that we're being provided. And so I'm just having a struggle weighing, weighing the risks and, you know, being consistent with, um, with that thought process.
If, I, I would ask about COVID, um, uh, long-term effects, hospitalizations. I mean, it's not just you lived or you died. There's a whole bunch of stuff in between there.
Right. And it's the same, it's the same thing with, uh, the effects of sugar, the effects of eating McDonald's twice a week. If, I mean.
I can't catch McDonald's from someone else, Ryan. I can't catch McDonald's from someone else.
But you make that choice yourself. So the choice is be at risk or don't. That's, that's all I'm trying to say. And so it's just be consistent and, you know.
If I could.
I will, I will say.
We were talking about the, the CDC guidance. One thing I just wanted to add for consideration to the conversation, um, related to risk that's included in the, in the CDC guidance, um, is I think some of the nuance of this. So even in the latest CDC guidance, which recently came out, and so I agree with Ryan, like if we're going to look at a source, let's look at the entirety of that source. I think that makes a ton of sense. The CDC is clear in its guidance to schools and reopening that it's not just all risk, no risk. And it sort of categorizes lowest risk, more risk and highest risk. Lowest risk is virtual only. According to the CDC, we've already talked about why that's not a part of the conversation today, or it is for families who are able to select that option. And then it says highest risk, full-size in-person classes, activities and events. And in between, in the more risk, so not the highest, not the lowest, small in-person classes, and it uses as an example, hybrid. So I just, I, I just add that to the conversation to say, like, I think it can be easy in this moment to think about, like, it's all risk or no risk. But the CDC tells us to think about this in terms of sort of degree of risk and what we can do to mitigate the risk in our unique, um, context. And it's not either, and you know, just a, an either or sort of choice. There is a middle ground because that's the hybrid. So.
Sure.
Food for thought.
And, and that's a good way I share those numbers because we're all accepting a level of risk every single day, no matter what we do. You know, and it, it's, you know, to point out as well, we're also acting like COVID-19 is the only risk. If, if kids are at home, there's also risks of other things when they're at home unsupervised. There's risks of online predators, which if you read anything about that, they're having, they're just super excited about kids being at home during the school day, um, which is really, just really, really, um, disturbing. Um, domestic abuse, like there's other risks involved, um, that we, that we also have to take responsibility for if we are saying, yes, we're only going to move for 50%. So I'm just saying, if we're going to have a discussion about risks, let's have a discussion about the numbers and actually take a rational thought process about it. Um, because if you do that, you can see that the risks are not actually, um, as great as what everybody says that they are. And that's, that's just my point.
The only, the only, the other thing I'd say about the CDC is we as a country have been looking to them to be prescriptive. And they've never meant to be prescript, prescriptive, you know, they're, they're giving out guidelines, um, um, for the, you know, to cut down the spread of disease. That's their mission. Um, and, uh, you know, they've struggled as they've tried to develop these things to be consistent themselves. If you flip a few pages over on their own site, when it talks about influenza, they actually have a headline that says influenza is dangerous for children. I mean, literally an article around influenza is dangerous for children. And, and we've yet never taken that piece into this level of consideration, given the numbers of what that particular, uh, scenario does in schools and children and whatnot. We wait till we get to the 10% um, spread in a building before, you know, we, we decide to take action. So, um, again, it's hard to, um, uh, say, and, and it's back to what I was trying to say before. It is about risk and it is about how we're defining that and how we can tell that, um, different communities have chosen what that level looks like. Um, there are seven of us who are wildly different and, and have our different opinions and will reflect the community. That's why we're elected. You know, we're here to bridge that gap between the community and the administration in, in operating, um, this, this district. So I think really it boils down to, uh, you know, I, I have a hard time thinking that, um, after the six weeks on the, the next day, that all of a sudden, all of these fears and these struggles go away. Right? I, I, I understand this is going to be a process and there isn't anything magical about six weeks. Um, I'd be more inclined, uh, to be, uh, in favor, if it was shorter, saying we're going to, um, start the, the, the first week with an A group and the second week with a B group or something. I don't know. I'm just saying in terms of, um, what are those measures leading into it? And I, I do think too, regardless of how any of us vote on this particular thing tonight, 100% of us will be heroes and zeros at the same time. Um, because we'll have people that agree with our decision and people that don't agree with our decision. That's the difficulty that we get put in. Um, when we're talking about these, uh, levels of decision-making, you know, each of us have to vote, um, uh, for what we believe, uh, and, uh, what, um, we've come to understand and to be the advocate for our portion of the community, whatever that represents. So, uh, you know, I.
I guess I've got to chime in here just a little bit. Um, risk, risk is numbers and risk is data. I mean, we have whole actuarial people everywhere on the planet whose job is to analyze risk and all that. But I think our, our goal, our mission, our, our job in our everyday life is, is not eliminating risk, it's mitigating it. It's not, and it's not either or, it's and but, you know, how many rules are there in Iowa code, uh, Jeff or Jesse, you might be able to tell us, that tells schools how to mitigate risk. We can't have multi-story elementary buildings and have kindergartners on the second floor. We can't have water fountains that are too high. We can't have toilets that are too high. We have to have bathrooms within so many feet of preschoolers. You know, windows have to open a certain way, doors have to open a certain way, chairs can't be too high. Everything is mitigation. It's, it's doing what we can in our spaces that we can control in our home. I mean, for crying out loud, they make window visors that tell you not to operate your car while you're driving them to mitigate the risk of people being stupid and driving with visors in their windshields, you know? We can mitigate risk. We cannot eliminate it. We all know that. But we can only mitigate what happens within the four walls of our schools while our kids are in school. While we're running our before and after school programs, while our kids are in athletics, while our kids are in extracurriculars. That is where the schools can follow our mission of educating and doing all those things. And like, you know, several people have said, schools have taken on a lot that has nothing to do with the ABCs and reading and writing. And they've done it because it's, it's needed, you know? We've talked about equity and socioeconomic things, you know? We're providing hotspots, we're providing computers, we're mitigating as many things outside of our buildings that control what happened inside our buildings. We can mitigate what happens in our buildings. We can control that. We're given authority to control that. Mitigating risk for our students means doing in our buildings what is the safest for them at this moment in time. It's not saying all or nothing. It's not saying we can fix everything that happens outside of our walls because we can't. We don't know now what families are doing outside of their walls. Up until probably the past few months, I would venture to say the vast majority of parents didn't know what teaching was happening between the four walls of their kids' classrooms. I'm glad that so many people are so invested in what's happening in their children's education. It's fantastic because frankly, a lot of us are going to be assisting with that a lot more than we ever thought. But it's, it's mitigation. It's not elimination. And there's only so much that we can do within our schools. If we drop that ball, it's on us within our school days, within our staff, within our associates, within our custodians, within our students. They are the ones, you know, we can support as much as we can outside of our walls, but we cannot fix everything outside of our walls. We'll do what we can. But right now, what can we do to come back to school? I mean, Ryan, you talked about influenza, you talked about pneumonia. My kids have to have a flu shot. My kids, I've had influenza. I had to take Tamiflu. We have had time and opportunity in this world to mitigate the risks of those things that have come up and have been disasters, you know? We had time to develop flu vaccines that we make every year. We have our kids vaccinated. We have antibiotics, we have antivirals. We just haven't had the time yet with this particular virus to do all the things that we use to mitigate all the other things every other year. Give us time to do that and those things will probably be just part of the routine that every school year is.
And yet even with those vaccines, people die. Even with those vaccines, the risk of death is, is even higher than COVID with people that don't have pre-existing conditions. I understand what you're saying. But I just, I just cannot take out of my mind the fact that the risk of the kids being out of school is greater than the risk of the kids being in the school. And if we're not willing to accept the risk now, when are, when are we going to be willing to accept it? Because six weeks down the road, we're not going to be out of this. I mean, we keep talking like that, like it's a magic number. And I understand, I understand we, we should reevaluate. I get it, but let's, let's not act like it's a magic number because the chances of us doing something different are not, are pretty low. And the fact of a vaccine is not going to actually come around. I mean, what, Dr. Fauci, what did he say, like 2021? So we're going to have to learn how to live with this at some point. So at what point does it become something that we're okay with living with?
Maybe trying that hybrid for six weeks tells us what we can live with.
I want to jump in a little bit.
Quickly, because I think we need to decide if we're ready to move for a vote and not to delay this a week. So say what you got to say.
Uh, mitigation idea, maybe, uh, doing the same schedule, like Monday, Thursday, Tuesday, Friday, and every other Wednesday might help disadvantaged families for stability and jobs when you can't, cannot work. Just thinking about that because we have to think about everyone's situation. So that would be a possible, uh, flexible change possibly. Uh, and then just the whole idea, uh, maybe to piggyback on Ryan is this education is essential. All of our employees that work in our school district are essential. So obviously, keep in mind, we got to do whatever we can to keep all of them safe, the employees, the kids. But this is something that we do have to keep moving on or our kids are going to be, I mean, we already missed nine weeks. And if we go hybrid, to me, that's halftime, literally, because you're not going to have that much contact. So we could end up going, uh, three fourths of a year with nothing or halftime. So I'm thinking if that is the case, I'm just looking at the future, then maybe all the kids were in a big grade at the end of, in March, maybe that's the grade they should be in a year from now. I'm just thinking out loud because we are going to have such big gaps that we got to think long-term. Uh, and I do appreciate all the work everyone's doing and I appreciate everyone thinking, okay, this is what I think's best for kids. Everyone on this board is trying to do the very best of what they think's best for the kids, family, staff, everybody. And the thing is, we just don't all agree on what's the best way to do it. Um, so with that in mind, I just thought we'd throw out a few of those things though. Change up the schedule for hybrid. Uh, I don't know, maybe have people pick virtual or 100%. I don't know, but I'm just thinking we, um, we all want the same thing. We just maybe don't agree on how to get there.
Katie, did I see your motion? I would, I would just, I, I just want to, I would be remiss to not sleep all the night if I did not say two things. One, I think we have to look at the denominator and the worst case scenario of bad flu season is about 80,000. And we're already at 4 million cases worldwide. So this transmits much more readily. I think that's important, pay attention to. And then secondly, the research around class size says when you get below 12, around 12, you can actually make a difference in student achievement. And so I, I want to be really reticent in, I don't want to attach to the binary thinking that you're only going to do a half a day's work in that plan. I actually think by minimizing class sizes, it provides us a great opportunity to do some gap, gap closing that we would not be able to do if we had everyone on site. So.
Amy?
Good point.
I just want to say, Jim, I, I think it's unfortunate that you think doing the hybrid is just 50% as if no learning is going to happen on those days they're at home. Um, I don't know that that's true. Um, and then the second thing is if we're going to do this survey, it, it's very clear from the community that we are concerned about those who don't have internet or don't have, um, access to that. So Dr. Lineman or Jessica, could you tell me how many surveys we would have to mail? And then wait for those to come back so we can count those people that everybody is concerned about?
I can tell you the process that I think we would need to go through to identify those folks, which I think we could do, um, pretty quickly. It sounds like, and, and, you know, folks who were here, um, more than two months and one day ago will help me understand what data we collected in the spring. It's my understanding that in the spring, we did a little bit of an audit and assessment of, um, which families in our community did not have easy access to email. Um, so I think we go back to that data and we can identify those families and we could mail something to them, um, over the course of this week. But I would want to give them at least a full week to response. And then you just add in, you know, the mailing and the collection time. But I'll ask my, uh, fellow cabinet members to hold me accountable to whether that actually happened in the spring. Um, and that I didn't just lie to you all. I hope I didn't.
It did. And we had about, um, I can give you numbers. It was right around 500 that we mailed hard copies to. So I think you heard from one of our speakers tonight that we didn't survey people um, who didn't have access. That would have been inaccurate. We did. We sent 500, um, paper surveys home. The other thing I would want you to know is that, um, if you were to choose hybrid to vote for hybrid tonight, I do think it would be totally appropriate to share the two versions of the hybrid that we've discussed and get community parent feedback on those two versions, which hybrid better. and get community parent feedback on those two versions, which hybrid better meets your family's needs. I think that's a fair thing to survey parents and community about. Because going back to Erin and Ryan's um, extended conversation around risk, I I do think this is all about risk, which is exactly why um, surveying people on risk mitigation efforts does not make sense. That is the responsibility of the employer and our board and administration to determine what is the best way to care for and keep safe all of our students. And so some of the spirit behind some of the emails where, well, if they're going to choose that online, that's their choice. And our our desire to sort of push people out, to me, does not feel like an inclusive message. Because I really do believe we can provide a high quality education for every student in a hybrid model, even more so than in that remote learning environment where they get no touches with a live teacher, no time face to face. So I just, I I can't sleep tonight without advocating for every single student and also saying I do love the spirited conversation and the the debate. And I think it just speaks to the sincerity with which you all care for kids and this community and our students. So.
I think the spirit behind the survey isn't to be, isn't to push people out. Um, I think it's just, I agree with you. We do need to make, we do need to make the decision. But I just, I think we need to have, one of those data points is the community input. We are a community school, like Jim said, and knowing how they would vote and how they would react is part of that decision. And saying that it's not part of that decision is saying that we don't care what they have to say.
Hi, Ryan, can you hear me? So so to the point that you just made, um, somebody raised an excellent question about melanophleous surveys and the time required to get that back. And being, as Dr. Lindemann just mentioned, that this is a very time sensitive matter. Because either way, there is so much planning and prep that's needed. We actually need more time than we currently have. So if we allow another survey, um, and I understand the request for that, but if we allow it and if we truly do it in a way that includes the the people who we are saying are often left out, what timeline does that leave us with? Does it allow us to appropriately um, prepare those classrooms? Those those people who are involved, the students, everyone? Do we do we efficiently serve the plan that we are projecting? Um, and some of the things that you mentioned, and Lori, I know you told us to be quiet, and we will soon. But um, some of the surveys you mentioned were not comparing apples to apples. They were um, controlled environments with adults, which is very different when you consider our full student population and what teachers will have to do to serve them. So I don't know. I don't think that we have enough time for that. And I do think that it is a responsibility of leadership to make the best decision. So a- and it's not void of um, of parent input and consideration of that. And I would venture to say many of our teachers are also parents of students who are in the district. And so they have a very dual perspective of what that looks and feels like from both um, angles. And we've heard that during our, you know, the public comments. We've seen it in our emails, but there does come to a point when a decision has to be made. And if we delay that, then, you know, at what cost?
Do I have anyone right now who um, would like to put forth the vote? If we delay to delay voting on the hybrid model?
Yeah, I motioned to put.
Yeah, so Brian is already. We just need to vote it up or down, so.
I I I need a lot more information. How long is the delay? I want to know what's going to be in the survey. I want time to evaluate the survey. Like, I want all that information before I'm going to vote on this.
Now we want to evaluate the surveys. We found two surveys that we didn't get to evaluate.
Yes, but from what I've heard tonight, the surveys, they want to go out and say, do you want 100% 100% online, or do you want 100% in the classroom? And I'm not comfortable with that.
What would you be comfortable with?
Well, if you're going to ask, you need to present all three of them. Why would you take hybrid off the table?
I wouldn't. Never said I wouldn't.
Everything that was presented, spoke of tonight, was offering those two options.
Technically, what we would vote on, right? Sorry to interrupt. What we're voting on right now is to just delay voting on the hybrid for one week. That's that's technically the motion that's on the table. So we would only, you would say, yes, I want to delay the vote on approving returning to school as a hybrid. You don't want to vote on it tonight. You want to vote on it a week from tonight. That's that's the only motion that is on the table right now.
Now, the motion was with us, agreeing that we would do a survey as well. That was part of it.
Um, what I have written down. Lori, this is Jennifer. I have a motion to postpone vote until after the survey.
Oh, until after the survey. So theoretically, we would be, Jeff, get me, get me straight here. We might be, we're we're technically postponing the vote to an undetermined date because we would need to develop a survey, implement the survey, and get the results back from the survey. So I cannot say a particular date.
Excuse me, technically, um, the motion to include postponing it until a survey is done is a motion not to do a survey, but a motion to postpone to an indefinite date. Um, you can't combine the requirement of a survey in a motion to delay, whether to a specific date or to an indefinite date. Because then it's no longer a priority motion. It's a main motion. It has topics other than the issue of delay. So there is no requirement that the board do a survey. It's simply that the board postpone the vote. Now, you can make another vote motion after the main motion is decided. But this vote should be limited to the question of, do we delay or not?
And the delay.
Does everybody understand why I'm doing, why I'm saying that?
Yes, and the delay. The delay can have no date on it because we do not have criteria in order to set a date. Is that correct?
Well, you could make a motion to delay it until August 3rd, but that wasn't the motion. I mean, the motion was to delay to some further date, um, not specified. Um, what I'm saying is, what what I'm saying is an improper part of the motion is the requirement for a survey. That requires a separate motion after you vote on the main motion.
Okay.
I understand the desire to tie the two together, but but you can't do it and and still have a priority motion.
And the main motion, Jeff, I just want to make sure. There's a lot of words here. The main motion is not the delay. The main motion is the hybrid model. Is that correct? Okay, sorry.
And by having a priority motion to supersede that is whether we're going to delay the vote on it?
So I'll, since I executed, I'll make.
The only kind of, the only aspect of the motion that has priority over the main motion is the motion to delay to an indefinite time.
Right. So I think for the sake of 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 just clarity and and understanding what everybody's voting on, um, I do think we we can't go any farther than a week for sure. But I will amend maybe the uh, second motion to include delaying it until the next next Monday, the 3rd. So at least we have something definite we're voting on um, from a timeline standpoint and make that ambiguous out. Now, I can, I can update that, but it still needs a second, correct? Uh, or does Ryan need to agree to?
If Ryan agrees to the amendment, it does not need a second.
I agree.
The the motion maker can agree to the proposed amendment. Um, and and that wouldn't require any further second. But if he doesn't agree, then yours becomes a motion to amend, which would require a second in the vote.
Oh, man.
I think we're clear then. I think we're clear.
Okay.
We're strictly going to vote whether or not we want to delay this a week. Uh, I think that's what's on the table at the moment.
Okay, so all those in favor of delaying this vote for one week, say yes.
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 Those opposed to delaying this vote for one week? Do I say yes or no? Yes. No. No, no. Jennifer, what was your tally? I believe I heard four noes, three yes. Is that correct? We're on here. Who is acting? Is Jesse, are you, is Jennifer Jameson acting as?
She is, she should be. Yep.
I just can't hear her.
I can't either.
Maybe she can hold up her fingers for the vote.
I don't know if we lost her.
Or could she text someone that she got what, what her, I don't know.
I'm checking with her right now.
Okay. I just want to have public clarity on what the vote was.
Yep.
We need public clarity for sure. It's kind of a big vote.
I don't see her name. She just lost connection.
Okay.
I think she's calling back in.
Oh, she's calling back in. Okay. Could it be any more anticlimactic? Want to do a roll call? Or what is the easiest way then?
Call's fine.
Okay, let's just do. Jesse, do you have, did you say you heard from her? Sorry, I had somebody in my ear.
Yep, she told me that she lost connection. I asked her to please call back in so we could record a vote.
Did she lose connection to hear the vote or?
I do not know. Now I have the little dots that tell me she's replying. Uh, yes, let me get her, um, let me get her the number or Samantha, if you can send her.
Can I have somebody here tally a roll call, or does that have to be in a, an appointed thing or?
Jeff, I sub in for Jennifer if she's unable to connect. Can I be deputized?
You can become, the board can ask you to act as temporary secretary and conduct the roll call or otherwise. Listen to the votes.
Yes.
I'm willing to have me appoint you.
Repeat after me.
Appoint me. I am appointed. I will tell the truth.
You are deputized as temporary board secretary while.
Thank you.
Investigate internet connectivity. So in the interest of clarity, I will have a roll call vote.
And so it's a yes or a no when you vote. So just so everybody understands how.
Yes, to delay. No.
To not delay, right.
Okay, Erin?
Yes.
Amy?
No.
DeShara?
No.
Jim?
Yes.
Katie?
No.
Ryan? Okay, that was a no from me. And so that is one, two, three. That is seven, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion fails. The vote will not be delayed. Moving on then, is, do I have, I have the motion to approve the return to learn hybrid model. We have the motion and second for that. Does, does everyone feel that they are ready to vote on this? Or is there, is there anything? We've had a pretty vibrant discussion.
I would say is that, um, whether it's a yes or a no vote, I think every board member has this interest of uh, students, staff, and families. And it's just a matter of what we believe is safest.
Right.
Is there, is there a possibility that when we reevaluate this um, in four weeks, that we could still have a survey to have those data points? Can I make a motion for that potentially? No? Jeff, shaking your head no?
That that could be a separate thing we can do, um, unless it's conditional to, you're making whatever you want conditional, so.
Jen, can this be something that's a discussion point? You know, like you had mentioned earlier about, okay, whether or not this hybrid vote goes forward, you know, what that might look like, you know, what a survey can go out to the community as, what can? You had, you had mentioned something earlier about, you know, how things might might go forward after this vote.
Yeah, we were talking specifically about the two different hybrid options that have been outlined, getting some feedback on those. We certainly plan to do that. Um, and then I think what I hear Ryan asking though is, when we get ready to move into that next decision-making period, um, could we ask some questions more in the vein that he was discussing or advocating for tonight? Give us a little more time. We could, we could draft some types of questions, especially once we know specifically the metrics coming out from the state. It might help our drafting of those questions and um, throw those to you before we get to that decision point.
Yeah, Jen, thank you. I I think the metrics will obviously help us at four weeks into school. Uh, and I, I'm sure all of us will want to be knowing as much as we can. And so it only makes sense. Hopefully, it'll all be great metrics and we'll all go back to school.
We would love that.
Can I, can I clarify something?
Yeah.
I'm thinking back through my comments before because that's what I do. And I think I made a comment about, um, you know, the potential risk to kids while they're at home about online predators. My intent with that was not to make anybody fearful that that is a risk. Although I do, I would say, you know, please make sure your kids are safe online. I just, I just wanted to clarify. I was not intending to make people be fearful of that. I definitely do not want to do that. Um, so I just wanted to clarify because in the spirit of that conversation, I think I blacked out for a minute. Um, but I think, I just, um, I know, I know I said that and I'm I'm realizing how that probably could have come across, and I just would like to clarify and say that's not, that's not what I meant to do.
Well, I I definitely, you know, as a parent, you know, we all, we all think of things like, my hope is that since we will be providing district issued Chromebooks to every child, that all of the safety features that we have built into Chromebooks since we've gotten them will be active and included and and vibrant and powerful to help protect our students as much as we can. I see, I see staff nodding, so I I think that is definitely part of the, part of the plan on that. So I need a vote to, this on the motion to approve the return to learn hybrid model, whatever that means, for the beginning of the 2028 school year.
Do you want to do a roll call vote again here?
Let's do a roll call vote because we're online and because it's hard to hear when people talk at the same time. So I'll just work my way around my circle again like I did before. Um, Erin?
Vote no.
Amy?
Yes.
DeShara?
Yes.
Jim?
No.
Katie?
Yes.
Ryan?
No.
And I am a yes. So the motion passes. Thank you all for the vigorous and vibrant and heartfelt and emotional debate. We're better as a board for it. We're better as a committee for it. And and we're going to be okay. And we're going to move forward, and we're going to do all the things that we need to do. I have faith in our staff. I have faith in our parents. I have faith in our community that we can do all the things that we need to do as best we can. Um, there is no new business. Um, board member reports. Anybody have any words left after tonight?
Just a couple, couple words myself. Now, I I sincerely want to thank um, the community um, that includes so many of our staff members as well for their continued communication and thoughts. Um, you know, these decisions, um, as you know, aren't easy, and there's a lot that go into them. Um, and I can tell by conversations I've had with people in the community, actual part of our staff, that there's difference of opinion in both of those camps. And um, there's, you know, uh, we all, we all want what's best. I think that's been said tonight. Um, I am confident that um, we will put that step forward um, with this particular plan. I also appreciate the fact that the seven of us can can have this debate and and to um, work with consensus now moving forward, now that four or more have spoken and put all of our vigor. all of our vigor into supporting the plan that's enacted. And I'd like the, the community to know too, that th, th, this is still just a process, um, and that in four weeks, when things are one way or another, there's going to be more conversation. And in another four weeks, there's going to be more conversation. And so, um, this isn't, this isn't over, unfortunately. We have a, we have a line in the sand and the, and the board has spoken, and I think that's, that's fine and it's good, it's what we need to do. Um, and we'll make those steps forward. Um, but, uh, I encourage our staff and our community, um, to continue to let us know, um, uh, their thoughts. And I, I just wanted to make sure that I expressed how much I appreciate. Um, I was counting one every 10 minutes for the last couple of days. Um, and it's, uh, uh, you know, it, it's, it's a lot to read, but I, I love the fact that our community is so engaged.
Absolutely. Amy?
Um, kind of echo that. I want to thank everyone who's already emailed me, everyone who's about to email me. Uh, I, I appreciate everyone's voice. There is not one population in the city of Aitney that I haven't thought about when I think about this. Um, I'm a child of a single mom, I know what that side of it looks like. Um, so I appreciate everyone's words. There are no other six people in the world that I would rather be in this fight with than the six of you. I appreciate everything you bring to the table, or the screen, or whatever you want to call it. Um, and we will be better people for going through this, we will be more resilient. Um, and I just want to thank everyone from the community, the administration, the six of you, um, everyone that's been involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
Did you say my name?
I did.
Okay. Um, you know, everything I just said, and also, you know, um, we all know this wasn't an easy decision by how long it took to arrive at it. And I too am a single mom and I don't share responsibility with another parent. So I understand those challenges and struggles, and I have looked at it from a realistic perspective, because guess what? That's my reality too. But I also see an opportunity for us to all raise up as a community. Um, the school has its responsibility and we have our part, but we also have other opportunities to come together and to, um, to support each other in whatever areas are needed. I don't know all of you, but, um, I know that I'm also committed to being supportive to others, because I've received that even from people I don't know. So this is not the end of opportunity for us, you know? We, we're just going to have to start working together with people who are in, um, our neighborhoods and our churches and our communities and figure out how we can close the gap for each other. Because regardless of what the decision was, there was going to be a gap to close. So, and, and I'm glad that we're proceeding with caution, because even if for six weeks gradually moving into that, it allows us more opportunity to kind of see, um, where things are as we go progressively. So that's what I had to say.
Thank you. Uh, Jim?
Well, uh, this is where I think about this decision as a board, uh, none of us ever envisioned when we got on the board that we'd have to have this conversation. Um, I was an educator for 33 years and, uh, highly passionate about what we're doing for our kids and our staff and our community. Uh, couldn't get enough, so I got on the board. Not feel like I've had enough, uh, I'm just kidding. Uh, but to be honest, uh, I appreciate, uh, dialogue with our board, and now we had a boat, and we all need to stand behind that boat as a group and do our best to carry forward and, uh, do the plan and then revisit when we get into week four of our, our school year. So we just got to move forward and do our very best. Thanks to all the people communicating with us.
Thanks. Katie?
Yeah, I echo everyone's sentiments. I appreciate, um, the emails, the phone calls, the texts, our front porch visits, all of the things that we've experienced, and I'm proud to represent a community that advocates for itself so well. Um, again, I, you know, I just want to thank this board. I, I appreciate the honest, transparent dialogue. I think that's extremely important for our community to see that its own diversity of views is represented here, um, and that we take that very seriously. Um, so, uh, I, I just want to thank everybody here. I want, and again, I, I want to say two more things. I'd like to publicly thank the return to learn team that put a tremendous amount of time and effort into putting that together and hope that whether, um, folks in our system agree or don't agree with our, our, our decision, that they, um, know the next steps moving for, you know, find some relief in knowing the next steps moving forward. Um, and, and then just in saying all that, I completely forgot the second point that I was going to say, so I'll be, I'll be done. Oh, the other thing I was just going to say, sorry, I remembered. As parents, as parents, I think the best advice we can give you is to start making plans for things beyond the hybrid schedule, 14-day quarantines and those types of things. I, I just, this is a long, this is a long game. It is not a six-week game, um, and much of it we cannot control. So, so please start working, um, within your networks and, and reach out to the schools, social workers, counselors, principals, to try to do what we can to support our community in whatever way we can as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ryan.
Oh, I wasn't on mute. Um, thank you, everybody, for your hard work. Um, ditto to everybody. Um, I think, um, you know, my email being made public online, um, you know, definitely I got put out there and I'm okay with that. If you, um, already getting emails, um, you know, threatening my existence, but if you have a, if, if you would like to talk to me more about your opinion, please feel free to email me. I do not disparage anybody that has a different opinion than me, and I will be 100% behind this decision, um, even though I voted no. Um, so please know that I am an ac, active supporter of the direction of this board after the vote, regardless of whether I was supportive of it or not. So please let me know if you have any issues with anything I said. Um, but other than that, um, I thank you all for the debate. Um, and, uh, I, I know that because we have such a passionate group of people here in our district, on the board, in our community, that, um, we can all step up and do what we can to help those in need. So thank you.
Awesome. You guys were great. Exhausting, but great, because doing hard things is exhausting and that's okay. Uh, like I said, you know, we've appreciated every, I know, I, I don't speak for myself when I say that we have read every email, every message, every text, every item that you send to us. And, and just because we may or may not have voted the way that was, um, particular for your wishes, does not mean we weren't listening to them. We have, we have a big picture, because there's times when I go home and tell my kids that I voted a certain way, and they are not pleased with me at all. And, and that greater good right now is, is where we have to focus. And we came to a decision, we're going to move forward with that decision, always as good science, for me, as a good science-based person, when we get better facts, we make better decisions. And I hope and I pray and I strive that we keep getting better information, that we keep doing better things with. You know, we work with what we've got, and I know the one thing we do have is an amazing, amazing staff from the custodians and, and the janitors and the associates and the food service providers to the teachers and administrations. We have a group of varied and diverse people who will do, as always, everything they can to make everything as good as it can be for our kids. And, and that's what allows me to make this decision. That's what allows me to go to sleep at night, and that's what allows me to send my kids to school here. That, you know, there's a lot of storm going on here, but once our kids get in the buildings, they're going to be, they're going to be okay. I, that's what, like I said, that's what lets us all go to sleep at night. And so thank you all. Um, Jen, uh, Dr. Lindemann, keep calling you Jen, I'm sorry. Dr. Lindemann, do you have anything to wrap up? Um, because after us is the superintendent report, and you are it.
I just want to say thank you for living our district mission tonight. Remember, we're united in our passion, commitment, vision for serving, so that everyone is prepared for a lifetime of personal success. And I think you demonstrated that tonight. You were passionate about serving the community, you were passionate about what you heard from folks and sharing that, you were passionate about making the best decision, and I just, I thank you for that.
Great. Um, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, all of you, so much.
Alright, everyone.
Thanks.